Okay, it's 9:03 and we're gonna call this Board of Supervisors meeting out of recess. Y'all please stand for an invitation. Mr. Bradford, 59.
Let us bow heads. For my turn, Father, to thank you, God, for the day of God. Father, we just thank you for allowing us to sit down one more time. And Father, we just continue to pray for our elected officials, our point officials, our first responders at our school, our teachers, our nurses, and this entire community, this county, and this state, and this country. Father, continue to bind us close together, oh God. And Father, we just want to send a special prayer to any loved ones that may have lost someone over the last two weeks, oh God. Father, continue to comfort their families, comfort their prayers, oh God. And Father, we just care to give your name, all our praise in the Lord. We pray for all the businesses in this county and in this city, oh God, that we prosper, oh God. And Father, we just care to give your name, all our praise in the Lord, that you continue to protect us, abide and lead us. In the name of the Father, in the name of the Holy Spirit, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I'm going to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to get a long call. Mr. Gray.
President.
Ms. Hutchins.
President.
Mr. Gaines, presently not here. Anybody heard from him? Mr. Middleton.
President.
Mr. Page Dean.
President.
Ms. Lewis.
President.
Mr. Slover.
President.
And I am here. I need a motion for the approval of minutes.
Thank you.
For September.
So.
Leave it by Ms. Hutchins. I'll second it. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
With the necessary corrections. I already talked to about it.
Okay. All right. All in favor? Any names? Motion carries? Need approval for the docket? Making those Mr. Gaines walk in.
Mr. President, before we move on to the docket, uh, I know I got no real white blue color and I forget a lot, but, uh, they got me on it for being absent. You know, it's in the session.
Which one?
I don't know which one it was, uh, I don't know if I was that, I don't believe I was that.
Oh, this is on the docket you're talking about?
Yeah, it's me.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Go check that out. All right. Still need a motion for the docket.
So.
Move by Mr. Gaines.
Supervisor Craig, second.
Supervisor Craig, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carries? Okay, I need approval for a financial report for Adams County Sheriff's Office, Chance Ray Clark, and purchasing support.
Someone.
Leave it by Ms. Hutchins.
Sir.
Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Any names? Motion carries? Special presentations, if any? I see some ladies in some red jackets.
Yes, sir.
Are you here for a special presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Y'all come on up there too. Just pose.
Excuse me. Thank you. All right.
Just need your name and your address.
Uh, Dr. Helen Davis, address 117 Galley. First of all, let me say good morning.
Good morning.
To the board president, to the board and all of us present. I am Dr. Helen Davis of Natchez Illumi Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. I bring your greetings from our president, Bethany Rose Jackson. If there are other chapter members present, I ask that you stand with me at this time.
Do you want me to say?
We want, we want to say thank you to Adams County Board of Supervisors for allowing us to be a part of your agenda today. Over the years, a wide range of programs for dress and education, health, international development, and strengthening of African-American families have evolved. In realizing this mission, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated provides an extensive array of public service initiatives through our five-point program, programmatic thrust, and those being economic development, educational development, international awareness and involvement, physical and mental health, and political awareness and involvement, social action. The goal of our political awareness and involvement, social action committee, of which I am chair, is to equip our community with the knowledge and skills needed to, uh, needed for meaningful participation in the public arena. Through a range of activities, discussions, and educational resources, we aim to inspire civic engagement and empower individuals to take action. We want to be a part of which, what you all are doing and offer our organization to provide support in programs implemented by this entity, which will fall to foster great collaboration between among the school district, the city, the county, and our local communities. We are willing to work with you in any aspect to ensure the success of those programs that are in the best interest of our community. Again, as chair, thank you for allowing us to be a part of your agenda.
Thank you for all your hard work. George. Tom McGee. Did I say that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Didn't get offended when you just announced your name when you've done it for 15 years.
Yeah. Um, I come to you today as a member and spokesman for Ms. Lou for the homeless. A recent statute caused us to form because the homeless were being removed from their encampments, as you might say. Our goal is to assist those homeless who will out of homelessness. And so I'm, towards that end, I'll reference a letter I put into your files where we are requesting the use of the safe room shower to allow us to provide showers to the homeless as a means to start a case file on each so that we might start moving those who will out of homelessness.
For what that comment, I need to ask Mr. Bradford about that. Is that legal?
It's for the, it's for the community.
Okay.
Do you have to say it or not? To be honest, I have to.
Oh, I, I don't know if we can use a safe room for that.
No.
Because?
Because using the showers, it'd be, it's the outside, it's not attached to the safe room, so that's, Lord, we got it, that's a community that they can't use it. And I don't know the liability part of it, that's a Scott thing.
That was the next thing I was gonna go through, a liability issue, but, uh, we'll get, uh, Mr. Slover to look into that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, are you, you got some more there?
Uh, no more than what's in the letter.
Okay.
Once that gets approved, be able to ask Mr., did Mr. Bradford be able to approve any other uses of the building and that physical plant for future activities? Which might include then, like, a temporary portable shower and use of the building once the will, build, once the built, the weather gets cold.
I mean, for a certain degree, can we do that anyway, for a certain degree of, uh?
Yes, ma'am. But we talked about during our shower events for that few hours, allowing us to go inside when it's problematic outside.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. President.
Yes.
Uh, I want to thank you, ma'am, for, uh, and whoever you're working with, whatever LLC you're working with, uh, to try to address a situation where, uh, seemed like the homeless got even more homeless with the bigger they came out.
Yes, sir.
And it seemed like, uh, don't matter care.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I want to say that, uh, I was always told you're gonna be judged how you treat the least of them. And homeless people is definitely considered as the least of them, and sometimes people look down on them, whatever the case may be, so, uh, whatever I can do to assist you and whoever you're working for, I'm 100% on board with that, Mr. President.
Okay. Any other comments? Um, we'll definitely have Mrs. Slover look into that, and, uh, where are you, have they currently moved to some of them? They, are these all over the place?
That's part of what we have to find out through our case file.
But you're making contact with a lot of them.
Well, that's the idea, to give them a shower, which they want, to start a case file on each to find out where they are, who they are, and what we can do to help them get out of that condition.
I, I know the churches are helping some, I know both willing, meaning chaplain, yes, yes, sir. Out there to bid and, and some other country.
And, and then, sure, you'll see a second page there with names on it, who are some of our, we can't call them members because we're not an official organization, but are meeting participants.
Okay, Mr. Bradford.
That's, Father, one legal way the board can do it, uh, you can declare emergency due to homelessness in here, and we'll recover under that. And we can just continue every 30 days as needed with that. Once we get enough homeless people and see what we got, we can just do it every 30 days, that's a legal way you can do it, with open up everything that we need to provide to help them out with the community, because it's community-wide.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Um, to the homeless, I know it was okay by Walmart, right?
They used to be.
Okay. Do they not break behind the, uh, our school, do they go that way?
Uh, in what we call the old movie theater area, that's part of them, some of them are Trace Town, some of them are under the bridge, McLaurin, some of them are over on the trace there, and that's just what I'm hearing.
They're everywhere.
Yes, sir. Uh, and some of them are couch surfing, as they so-called.
Uh, Mr. President, everywhere we go, every conference we go to, the one, the last one we just left in Philadelphia, they were outside the convention center, and, uh, this is a serious problem in this nation, and, uh, it's amazing how we do a better job of taking care of people outside this nation, you know, we take care of one right here in the nation. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Back to, uh, Mr. McGee. Mr. Barrow.
Um, I'm here, as you know, we've been working on the, uh, design specs and drawings for the restroom pavilion at the, at Justin Willis Field. I think you should have a cost estimate in front of you, uh, that we prepared based on the final drawings, and the drawings are complete. Uh, what I'd like to ask today is approval.
Oh, wait. I should have, they should have passed around.
It should have been passed around.
I didn't realize this. I thought we were all thinking we got it.
Uh, and, and I'm, I'm coming for you today to ask, uh, your approval to go ahead and put this project out to bid. Uh, I am working with Lynette to finalize the front-end documents and specs to be sure there's, your grant, flesh loan is involved, uh, and to make sure there's no specific documentation we need to include in the, the spec that we have. But, but my preliminary proposal is to bid this on October 20th, uh, or advertise the first advertisement for October 20th, have a pre-bid conference November 4th, tentatively. We'll receive bids on November 18th, which would give us a couple of weeks to make sure that the contractor has got his, uh, checks his math and accepts a bid, and then hopefully have the board approve that bid on your December 1st board meeting. Then do a notice receipt on December 15th, we're gonna give them 75 days to construct it, which will put the, the construction of, uh, being completed, uh, at the end of February, February 28th, if we give them 75 days. You can see that the cost estimate that I've done is a little more detailed than we've done before, and it's still within the, the total $250,000 range, including the $20,000 in design fees that, that we have for phase one. Uh, the, the designs have not changed, we just have, you know, mainly what we've been working on the last month is getting the electrical structural engineers' drawings updated, as well as picking up a few, few items that we have, had to do, and then, we need to get the specifications, uh, with the right dates and, but we need the approval before we can put those dates in the advertisements and so forth. So, with that, I would ask for your, your approval, please.
Okay. You heard them, heard the request, I need a motion. Leave it by Mr. Middleton. Say thanks by Mr. Gaines. Discussion, I see at the bottom it says include sewer stubout only, or?
So, yeah, so what, what these drawings have, and we discussed this before, is that I've got about a 10-foot, uh, the sewer coming out of the building is a 10, comes out about 10 feet, which is typical, we're just gonna have it keyed up like you would do in subdivision, uh, and then the, we did meet with the, uh, with the town, and they agreed that we could, we could take that, that line to the, to the manhole over, uh, in, in the parking lot and that, but that would have to be done by, um, the town's contractor, or maybe they might, they might self-perform it. Didn't get a lot of clarity on the best way for them to do it, uh, but that would, that's always been outside of our scope of work, is to do that, you know, that civil design.
But, but at least we have it.
The plan is to do a gravity fee to that manhole.
So we all need a little bid station?
At, at this point, we don't, we haven't, they have not done an official survey, but when we met, the, the, the invert of that, that manhole is about five feet below where we would be tying into it, so that should be plenty of fall for, you know, a six-inch or four-inch sewer, you know, sewer line. There, there's some possibility when they do the survey that that may not be correct, but it's, uh, it, he didn't think it was a problem, you know, because he had looked at the maps, and I think Wes had been out there, uh, with them before, so, but we do need to have that, you know, process being undertaken between now and, because we'll need, we need a place to tie the sewer in when, when this is finished in February.
Mr. Bradford.
Uh, how many phases do we have?
Well, I have a, a question. Originally, we had talked about doing the, the toilet room as phase one, or our, my contract is do the toilet one as phase one, and the restroom, I mean, the locker room expansion and renovation is phase two. Uh, the last meeting I came, I was told that phase two had, I had, I was not approved to start phase two. We started some of that design work, but I'm a little unclear as, as to whether I'm approved to do that or not. We had to do the two projects separately because of the, the loan or grant program would only allow the, it to be two, $250,000 projects, and they are separate projects. So, uh, if phase two is approved, we'll gladly move that forward and, and start working on those designs, but ours, my director at the last meeting wanted to push forward and get this out to bid, so it's good.
So, so when I'm looking at phase one, it's, uh, you got a design fee out here for phase one, and if you have to do phase two, then that's additional cost to us for you to do phase two, right?
The contract that you signed has phase one and phase two in it, uh, and phase two, that we, we divided the, the design fees into two, two $20,000 design fees. So, what, what, your contract with me is a $40,000 design fee, but I'm only including half of that in this project because it, it should be applied to this, this half of the grant, and the other would be applied to the other half of the grant, so.
Okay. My next question is, um, so, then, when we dealing with, uh, other people, they got to do something in this project, like the city of Natchez, do you have anything in writing saying that the city gonna do X, Y, Z, or you, or how do that go? Because if it ain't in writing, it don't exist.
Uh, well, I do not have anything in writing, and I don't think that I've got standing or authority to, to request that. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not the, you know, I'm not the municipality that would have. I have coordinated it so that, I've been told it's okay, but that's one of the points is.
Who are you talking to?
Uh, I, I can't remember the name, but, uh, no, we, we, I met with Johnny.
Here's the deal, it's waterworks, and what do, what they give us authority to do is tie into it, but they're not, they're not responsible for anything, they're giving us authority to tie it into the manhole in the parking lot, the town, the coin, the pool, or the safe room.
So my next question is, is, is gonna be some additional funding for, for us to do this, right?
To run to, to board.
So do anybody know what that gonna be?
How far in?
About 500 feet.
See, this is one thing, but then we got some additional funding that we gonna have to pay that's not on this paper.
Is that all underneath the parking lot?
Uh, a good part of it goes, about half of it's underneath that parking lot, yes.
Scott, let me ask you a question, uh, is there any kind of way that we can get with the mayor and bring him on board, and, uh, he can talk to the waterworks since the waterworks is under the city, and, uh, since the city gonna benefit from sales tax when we have events at that park, uh, can work out something where we gonna have this additional cost hanging over our head?
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll, uh, the motion will be, uh, change a little bit and say that pending, um, the tie-in, the help, the tying through the city. That work with?
As long as it doesn't play.
I mean, we end up having to.
We have to be prepared for it.
No, it's okay.
Was it called Scott? Lynn Adie Scott?
Uh, with the bid, we, we want to advertise October 20th, so, uh, now, to, just a point of contact, this project does not include that, that work, so, and you do have the money budgeted, so legally, I think we can go out to bid with the restroom, uh, building, uh, before, you know, we have that, that worked out. We, we know that we can do it, it's just a matter of who's gonna pay for it and who's gonna do it. Uh, that is not included in this bid, so, uh, I, I think that if we want to move forward with the bids and work that out, we've got, you know, we've got till February to get it, to get it completed. Uh, and the downside, if you haven't, didn't have it completed, is we would be able to, you know, you'd still have the restroom completed, you just wouldn't be able to use it because you wouldn't have the sewer tying. But, uh, we also may come in below bid too, which may some, I mean, we, we know where we can take it, and, and so we gotta make sure that we're able to take it there, and we gotta make sure, I just want to get, I, I, I think that the, the push is to get this started, because this is gonna take longer to build than that project.
Yeah, you're gonna get your part over with then.
No, I want to get, no, 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 you're, no, absolutely not. What I want to do is I want to facilitate trying to get the restroom to open as early as we can during baseball season. So this fast-tracks it, uh, and, uh, I'm, I'm willing to work with whoever I need to work with, uh, to get that in writing and to get that done, uh, but I am not a civil engineer, and that's, that's outside of my purview of, of the things.
My next question is, uh, you didn't say his best, Smith is on board with everything on this paper, is that what you said?
Yes, yeah, yeah, she, well, she has, she hadn't seen this paper, I was gonna give her one today, but she's not here, so, but I was, I'm gonna, I'll send it to her tomorrow. We've been, we have talked, and we, she knows that it's in budget. She just doesn't have this exact piece of paper that you're.
So why you didn't send this to her?
I, I thought I was gonna see her at the meeting this morning. When we talked, I thought she would, we, she said she would be here, but I don't see her.
I think she was trying to, I think she was trying to ask all these questions. So what if this, if Wes don't agree with this being what happened after we just all made approval?
Maybe, maybe.
Could somebody send her a copy of this and get her blessings before we go on board approving something that she might not agree with? Could somebody just send her a copy of it?
Say she's in favor.
I, I did speak with her last week, uh, late last week, and told her where we were, and she had no objection verbally.
I understand what you're saying, but you say she didn't.
I told her that we.
See these numbers?
I told her it was within budget, she was not seeing the exact 247,964.
I feel more confident she see.
The grant is for 250, or we got up to 250?
That's my understanding that we have two, 250 grants.
Um, do you have a ballpark idea, that's power in the bun there, but what the cost is gonna be running sewer line that far? Any idea?
I, 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 I didn't, I don't.
Robert, you got any idea?
I don't, I may finish up there, I may go, 250 offset off. Of course.
Could we just say pending approval by, uh?
Bob, Lynette?
Yes.
Southwest, okay. All right. Any more discussion? All in favor? All right. Any names? Motion carries?
Uh, one more question, if I can just get a directive on phase two, what is your pleasure as far as us on phase two?
According to Lynette, 250 was this year.
Okay.
And we were gonna do phase two next year, that's why she told you.
Okay.
So down on the locker rooms, because that grant was only good for 250,000 yearly.
Okay, so, so what's?
Well, you didn't clarify that with her, but right, I wouldn't do anything with phase two, so you're in part with her. That's not understanding.
That, that's, that's not a problem, I just need a clarification when I need to, I, I want to move forward as soon as I can, but not, not, not before, I'm sorry.
No, we're going from, she's gonna have to apply for that grant again, same process is due.
Okay.
Just verify.
Yeah, I will. I'm gonna give her a call soon if I get out.
All right.
All right, thank you, guys.
Uh, Mr. Robert Bradley.
I was just coming to find out, has anyone made a decision on the DHS bid 2025-0080?
Um, we, we bid it that, didn't, did we not?
No.
We didn't make any decision as to what to do with it.
Uh, Mr. Name Price, you're here, can you go ahead?
No, we decided, you said take it on the advisement, we didn't make a decision on rebidding. Um, but I, we, but I do have paperwork on what he was speaking on, so I, I guess I have to go ahead and start on my announding. I'm gonna present everything, and he emailed us a letter, I don't know if you got a copy of it, it was, what did you, didn't you send an email out to him?
Yes, well, I'll send it to you and the board also.
Okay, all right.
With your tag.
Let me go ahead and present this.
Sure.
Okay, at the last board meeting, the Name Price Purchase Clerk for Adams County, at the last board meeting, um, he spoke about, um, he had four bids for floor, the lowest bid was Hutchins, Larry Hutchins, but we discussed, he only had Louisiana license, contractor's license, that was the last we were at. Um, but Scott sent out an email, statute of license for contractor, and it states, all bids submitted for public or private projects where the bid is in excess of $50,000 should contain on the outside or exterior of the envelope or container of such bid, the contractor's current certificate number, and no bid shall be opened or considered unless such contractor's current certificate number appears on the outside or exterior of said envelope or container. We had one bid that had the contractor's license on the outside of it, and that was, um, E O Z, and that bid was $103,879. And in that contract, he had his contractor's license. Mr. Bradleywell stated that they did not have a contractor's license, but this was submitted, I gave, paid a copy of this the day I submitted it, so they were in there when we got it.
Was it on, was it on the outside of the envelope?
He was the only one that had it on the outside of the envelope, was E O Z and his state contractor's license, but he's not the lowest bid. So we were trying to figure out what we gonna do, because the person that won the bid did not have Mississippi State, Mississippi contractor's license.
Yeah, you're not allowed to consider this bid.
Legally, what can we do?
You either accept the one that's.
You either accept the one that's a licensed contractor or you can not.
Yes, and I did talk to, uh, state attorney and they said the best thing to do since there's so much going on is to rebid this out.
Yeah. Go ahead, yes, ma'am.
So the, uh, T S just emailed me, this is the one for three months, they're ready to get the four fixed.
Yeah, but we got this the right way, they rid of nothing.
I know, I understand, but I just passed them a message.
Okay, um, you wanna make a motion to rebid?
Yes.
Okay, motion by Ms. Hutchins to rebid.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any name? Motion carried.
I do have a question.
Soon as possible.
How long will it take to rebid it?
I would give you that. So first I have to put it in the newspaper, so I already have it ready, so the next, um, one that will go out will be Friday. So I could turn it in today and it'll go in and be it, uh, in the newspaper, I put it on the state, uh, website and county website. After two weeks, then we have to wait another two weeks. We run it two weeks consecutively, yes, it's, it's very long. We run it two weeks consecutively. After the two weeks, then we have to wait two weeks to do the bid. We have to get people timed enough to bid on it. And then I will set the bid date immediately at two weeks after that.
So we're talking another two months?
Month, a little bit over a month.
How much money do we have allocated for this project? That matters for bids, I mean, that, that's.
I mean, if you tell them how much money, they don't know what to be.
We know it's, we know it's something to tell. So, so the bids back are off, the bids back are in the, in the paper, right? They, it says you have to put it on the envelope?
No, I got, when, when I submit bids, whoever give them to me, I put exactly what they give me. And I don't think that was on there with it, Missy, so maybe we might want to look at that again because it only showed the material. Um, how much square feet, it didn't have any specifics on there too much. So we might even look at that.
But on the outside of the envelope, they, are they told what they have to write?
No, on the outside of the envelope, no, um, on my bid parts, but not as far as contractors.
Bid, it's fact what's supposed to be on the outside of it.
Yeah, and the, and the bid spec, but the contractor's license is not a part of that because that's.
But their license number is supposed to be on there?
Yes.
Okay. On the outside of the envelope?
Yes. That's the, uh, statute.
That's what I was trying to clear up.
So we're gonna just, we already decided we're gonna go ahead and go with the rebid, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So.
All right, do you wanna give the rest of your report while you're there?
Yeah, he said he wanted something else to say on that, so do you want me to continue? He wants to speak again on it.
Okay, Lynn, you can finish.
Okay, I have a question, on the original bid, it didn't specify what type of material. It just said commercial grade flooring, if somebody can specify the exact product, it's a lot easier to bid than me gets.
I don't think it's exact.
It didn't have license.
I didn't bring the bid.
How many milliliter thick?
Oh, no.
Or manufacturer? It, it had nothing to that sort.
Does, did word commercial grade not actually have a, a stat on it?
It does, but you can buy commercial grade anywhere from a dollar fifty square foot on up to twelve square foot.
So we have to, uh, go back and add things on, it's gonna be low in it. Cause we gotta redo it all, the county and I have to have everything on there that they're asking for.
Okay, have it ready for Rob?
Yes, I guess Missy and I get together and we can, yeah, I can add that in.
I don't know anything about it, so I guess I'll just call.
So, which, the most important thing is, because they're probably not gonna bid anyway. But we need something that's gonna last you thirty years, not.
No, whoever gives me a bid, I would have to get with somebody too, because I'm not familiar with flooring, so we would have to.
Johnny familiar with flooring?
Yeah.
Johnny, they work with.
Yeah, I, I can ask him. So unfortunately, they asked, he didn't even know, so I, I'll try to see if I can find some, cause it's commercial. But I'll get with Scott, maybe me, Scott and Missy can get together and look at that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
I'm gonna go on and move forward.
Is that, is that all you have, Mr. Bradley?
That's it.
Okay, go ahead, miss.
Thank y'all very much.
All right, um, that was the first thing on the list. The second is, uh, we took the remodel tree under advisement due to the fact that, um, the person that had, the company that had the lowest and best bid did not provide a bid on operations manager, which is so on being on grounds for this. So it was under advisement. Do we want to, um, go with the net lowest next bid or? I don't wanna see with that. Does, uh, Brad said it's important to have someone there on the ground and make a bid on that.
Where you recommend, Brad?
I recommend we, uh, go with, with next, with those there, the reason we got, has operations manager. That's the person that gonna be on ground much and everything.
Okay, and what's the name of the company?
The, the next in line, the great tech, and there is two hundred and twenty-nine dollars for debris monitoring. Which they want, if you do.
The two hundred and twenty-nine dollars represents what?
Um, we have positions and hourly rates, project manager, operations manager, field supervisors, low site monitors, debris site and tower monitors.
Two twenty-nine an hour, is that?
Yeah. It's combined, but this is two, this is two twenty-nine for all of those.
Okay. All right, need a motion?
Some.
For the number such? Second by, any more discussion? All in favor? Any name? Motion carried.
Okay, next on this, um, we had our annual bids, um, past control, we only had one bid that was baked. And, um, we never did make a decision on it and they sent me an email asking for bid tabulation and the results, but they were the only one that bid it, and I think Wes mentioned that they didn't do the previously, so we have to decide on either keeping the one we have or.
And we don't really have to accept either, uh, the bid anyway.
It's not required.
Okay, then we decided we're gonna go with red pest and, uh. Okay, we need that like a motion and we're just going to use red pest or just, I thought we had to.
It was, I asked Paige, you wasn't in the meeting, see, and I didn't have it.
So, good.
Good, Robert, Middleton, he used red pest. Second by Mrs. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? Any name? Motion carried, okay.
All right, next I have, uh, on October second, at ten AM, I had a bid opening for new twenty twenty-five upgraded compact truck loader. And we had two bids. Uh, Puckett Reynolds was a hundred and thirty-three thousand four hundred sixty dollars and ten cent, thirty-six months, three thousand hours. Um, eighty-two thousand buyback. And John Deere, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand two hundred five dollars and thirty-two cent, and, uh, buyback was fifty-five thousand. Um, after review, with the lowest investment bid is Puckett at a hundred and thirty-three thousand four hundred sixty dollars and ten cent with a thirty-six month buyback, eighty-two thousand.
Uh, Robbie? The, the hours, they, they put a limit on the hour, is that a problem? Okay. So you're recommending that we go back and we go with the?
The Puckett, a hundred and thirty-three thousand four sixty.
All right, you heard the request?
So.
Good, Bobby, Gaines? I'll second it. Any discussion?
Robbie, do it, Bill?
Yes.
All in favor? Any name? Motion carried.
Okay, next, um, Billy Dealey informed me that the board asked to get a court for cameras, um, inside and out for the courthouse. That's it.
Okay.
Okay, and the bid is with, uh, B and H. It's three thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars and forty-four cent.
And that covers what?
It's sixteen cameras. Um, it says high vision M series. Really, it's, it's not as much on there, all it says is sixteen cameras. And it's, from what I'm told, it was video and audio.
So that's buying them and that they install them?
That's him installing.
That's, Dealey's installing?
He's gonna put them himself.
So they're.
They're not wireless, but, uh, they are, that's, that's a really good price for those HD cameras, especially what you get. We actually have some now at other locations.
Okay.
So he's gonna be installing himself.
I think it's audio, video, color.
It is.
And that's the only bid, gentlemen?
Yes, it's a hundred five thousand, and they said that they checked around and this was the lowest one.
Okay, who's the, uh, whose money does that come out of? The sheriff's budget or, uh, the general fund?
We just trying to.
Sheriff's savings from all, we gotta get money out of it.
We were trying to help save y'all, boy.
Okay, you heard the request. Good on Ms. Hutchins. Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any name? Motion carried. Okay.
Okay, the last I have is, um, the vendor that's did the showers, was trying to find an update on that privacy wall. Forced a little, four thousand dollars, where are we with that? Um, he got paid for everything else, the three installers, but not the privacy wall.
Mrs. Slowber? Saving on the privacy wall till we never approve?
Uh, I was waiting on Brad to, to do something on that.
Yep, the, uh, the only thing is, on that project, um, to Brad, uh, the way it was done, it wasn't part of the initial bid. Uh, this was after the bid, after the fact on that. And the monies that we're gonna use for the privacy wall come from a special property grant that we give to Grand Gophers for the digital termination showers. On that, we do have the money for it, it was an after the fact project, but the contractor did not do a separate invoice and thing for it. He just put it all together, which it shouldn't been that way. Because the bid was originally for sixty thousand dollars, that general, for the initial bid on. The addition to that, when the city said we need to put some privacy walls up because we're gonna use it as a shower that subject to a different things, but we do have money, uh, in our budget for the special project on that. And, uh, the, the form that Mr. Slowber sent me, I disagree with because it's not taxpayer money. So if, you know, that special project that we get, that Grand Gophers gives us for that project on that. So that's the only holdup on that. If, can the board just allow us to get a PO for that? Because like I said, it wasn't part of the original bid. This was something he, we, we had to do on the backside for the inspection on. Uh, like I say, it's not gonna cost taxpayers money. It's special money that Grand Gophers gives us for that. So I'm just waiting on clarity from the board on that.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Don't get me wrong, I know the man will get paid for doing it, but I'm not gonna put myself in a situation and prove something that's not right, so Mr. Slowber, uh, what is your recommendation? Cause that's all I'm going, I'm not, I'm not getting to.
Yeah, there's a provision in the law that I sent over to Brad and I made a change, so they wanted to get a pay order so we could be ordered to do it. So, it doesn't matter whether, once it becomes, counties acquired and follow county bidding procedures. If we violate that, then it doesn't matter whose money it is, we have to still follow these procedures. Whether we're spending federal money or not, or we're at whatever money we're spending, we still have to spend consistently with the statute. And that's all it was, is a violation of the statute. The guy provided the, the goods, the good faith. And so the statute allows for him to recover, we just need the pay order to be entered, then we can pay it. That's why I sent it over.
Let me say this, let me say this. This is not the first time Mr. Ham, the Ham on Marty's Ham Road and we approved something, but they went back and changed the wording and made it fit to what we did. That would seem like to me.
So the Ointown Road was different because it was under a different contract. I don't know if this was even under a contract, it just had a scope of work to do. And so it would've been a change order in front of the contract versus a delay of work. There's a procedure that you did understand, contract roads, for delays of work under the Ointown Road. But we have done this, we've done this numerous times, numerous times, we've done this very procedure. It's been done.
So if you look the way you talking about, then we can approve?
We can approve it, and I said, I'm gonna say it's been done. And, and we have done that on numerous different occasions.
The only thing is, I'm not gonna sign it because in that statement it said I'm liable for.
No, yeah, I took that out and that's what.
Taxpayer government, and if I don't know, when you look at it, you know, I ain't no lawyer, but I'm pretty sure I agree. I'm not gonna sign it because I disagree. All the thing I'm saying is, we need to look into it. Because it's, it's, it's not taxpayer money. It's money I give to Grand Gophers for their project, we're not taking money from other county general funds. It's grant money that we give to Grand Gophers to upkeep, and that's all that's on there.
Thank you, ladies.
I'm not getting in between who right and who wrong, but at the end of the day, I'm following the laws.
So now, only thing is, we jammed out?
No, 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 I'm not talking about that. Um, you said you were presenting, uh, and, uh, if, if it comes back on us, I'll pay it, if it comes back. But I, I don't think it's gonna come back. So, I, I need a motion to, is it paying, Lou?
You don't need any motion, do anything at all, we gotta get a pay order in, entered and it gets docketed.
Okay.
That's how it goes.
Okay.
I thought we got it worked out, but evidently not, but that's fine. And it's done, you know, the county, this is not something on you.
Uh, Paige, could you put that in writing that, um, supervisor wasn't so here, Paige?
I'm gonna follow it. I did have one more question, listen to me while you're here, uh, and about those showers. You said once a week you want the homeless to be able to shower, right? I got a question about security. Now, the shower, I've been over there, so is it separate shower for men and women?
Yes, correct.
Assuming that's, all right, still, will there be some security? Is somebody gonna be there like you yourself, who's a former lawman? Um, sheriff, deputies, Brad, is somebody gonna be there when that takes place?
My membership says they're gonna have five people over there during shower time.
Okay, we didn't cover that, I just.
Further, and they, they recognize security is of interest.
To clear my conscience, I, I wanna, I wanna answer that question. Okay, Miss Dean?
Okay, that's all I have, so the final decision on the showers was we gonna, which one? I just wanna know before, I believe I heard two different things, if something don't happen, you'll pay for it.
Scott, Scott's gonna put it on the docket.
Can we docket it for the next one?
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, listen to that.
Good morning. And that's the county that's counting, we now the one, I just had two things this morning. Um, I wanna give you the calls for the whole month of September. Adams S O had five thirty-two, National Fire Department had four and four, National PD had eight oh eight. That was from Sept, the whole month of September. Also, I want, see if I can get permission from the board to sign a contract here. Um, that's for Ceasefire to run the lines from Hattieburg to the new facility. Uh, so we can hook up our radio equipment. And it does come on a monthly fee. I think it's three eighty a month.
Okay, um, we were using AT&T and we just, uh, are they not doing it or, or, um, I know y'all were trying forever to get the bill down and something just kept happening and happening for like six thousand a month or something?
Yeah, AT&T is the only vendor we have our trunk lines, that's the nine-to-one line. Long lines we have in there. But these are lines being ran to hook up to our radios. The Ceasefire from point to point from Hattieburg to, uh, Phelps. For the radio.
They got an existing line nearby that they're gonna tile, come out of it, do another, I don't know, time, for the whole.
What you refer to, a port-to-port is radio like microwave. Uh, the new radio system is digital and that's the closest site that they have is in Hattieburg, so they had to tie it into the site here for the new equipment that she has. That's only dealing with radios on the point-to-point. AT&T does it, but Ceasefire got the contract already, uh, so that's why she needs to go and get that contract, cause that's the only thing holding us up on that, we gotta have that point-to-point for everybody to start to try to even get everything moving on that.
Okay, we haven't bought these radios, or we have them, or they're swamped? Okay, we haven't bought these radios, or do we have them, or they're squashed?
We are, that's that's for the console radios, we already uh at that proof already.
Okay.
We just need to run the lines to get it to work.
Okay, I need a motion pending legal review of the contract, C Spire.
I make that motion pending legal review.
Move by Mr. Gray.
Three eighty a month.
Pending legal review. Uh second by Mr. Middleton. Any more discussion? All in favor? Uh any names? Motion carried? Okay.
Thank you, just something ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Slowber.
Good morning, everyone, I am Mrs. South Corbett McNeil, the M D R clerk out of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. This is the report. Um the disposition report has been reconciled. And I'm asking the court permission to send it to the State Audit Department.
So, alright, first, move by Mr. Middleton. Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussions? Right, are we great in that battle, okay?
Everything being matched up?
Yeah, I found, it was a couple of things in the road department and um the vehicles that were moved from the border supervisor's office to the Sheriff Department, Road Department, those were two things that threw off because they were purchased through one year and then they were on 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 someone else's inventory, then I had a couple of other things for the Sheriff Department like radios and the radios and tables.
All in favor? Uh any names? Motion carried?
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Good morning, Judge Bellin, with the intervention court, um I sent over a MOU to attorney Slowber for his review for Harbor House in Jackson. Just you and I, of course. Just need to throw the proper minutes.
He said it too.
Okay. Okay, this is one of the uh plates he uses for great, great. Okay, I need permission to sign this document for the uh Harbor House. General group of industry. Service and uh Scott had said he is checking. Move by, that was the second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried?
Thank you.
Maybe you walk away, but did we ever uh give the fifty thousand dollar? Can we do that? Are we ready to do it, or is that on your report?
That's what you are, we we have the money, it's still sitting in.
I I've got several calls about that, for the fifty thousand dollars to the youth court, fifty thousand dollars to the court that he represents for drug court, that we were gonna give out the opioid money. And we never, we never approved it to be doled out.
How much money is it?
Well, I think it's a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, but we give fifty to one and fifty to the other. Is that correct? Is it somewhere in that?
And there's all that for money just to?
Well, unless unless we talk, unless we talk too much about it, and there'll be others.
There's two people, two entities asking money, fifty fifty.
The youth court and the adult court.
Okay.
Okay, can I get a motion to give each one of those fifty thousand dollars? Out of the op- opioid money, move by Mr. Gray. Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh any names? Motion carried?
Good morning, I'm Kim from the tax assessor's office, I have a couple of board orders this morning. The first is gonna be for Mr. Henry Suggs at four eighteen Cherry Street. His home was deleted in error when his house was confused for another one that burned down, which caused his homestead to get deleted. I need to get that corrected for the twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five years. For the twenty-three and twenty-four year, the tax loss is two hundred and six dollars and seventeen cents each. And for the twenty-five year, because his home has already been put back on the roll before it closed, it is seven hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-six cents.
Move by Mr. Hutchins. Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion?
Did you run that by me again?
Okay.
Where?
His house reported as burned down in error.
But it wasn't burned down?
It, no, it was not. And then I have another board order, which is actually for an increase to the tax roll. This was a deed correction.
We need, did we carry that motion?
No. Sorry.
All in favor? Uh any names? Motion carried?
Okay, the other one is for an incre- increase to the tax roll for Miss Ellen Washington at sixteen Ruby Drive. This was a deed correction, we have been working on since twenty twenty-four. We have it corrected and we are now separating her lot out from the developers, and it's gonna increase the tax real, tax roll for her lot for four hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-two cents.
Did she agree to that?
Yes, she is aware that this is an offer.
Not aware that she did agree to that?
Yes, yes, when speaking with Aaron Patton, who is the realtor who's been communicating with Miss uh Washington, she has agreed and she is aware that this bill is coming.
Before it was agreed, the increase in these taxes, that due process rights, so if they, if they would give a join in to the board or if they're if they're willing to agree to it.
I have spoken with the realtor, and that's the only communication I've had between her and the realtor, because this was an issue where Ruby Drive's attorney closed her office and the deed had questionable property in there. She just wanted to get it corrected so she could file her homestead come this coming year before her house picked up on this lot.
Mr. President, I'm I'm gonna say the same thing, uh if you get something right, then I'm ready, but from one person to another person to you, that conversation changes a lot, so I I can't, I can't even prove you.
I would be glad to call her and come back and visit this in the next.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board, Mary Kay Doherty, Adams County Youth Court. First of all, I'd like to thank you for appropriating that opioid money to um our programs. I've got uh two, in your in your folder, you should have two travels for youth court. One is uh for myself, Mary Kay Doherty, and against Winter Town.
Uh no.
Terrance Hunter is the other one, right, same conference, one loud voice, November fourth through sixth.
Going to Bluffton?
Yes, sir.
Move by Mr. Middleton, second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh any names? Motion carried?
Thank you. Last thing I have is I have a contract in your folder, or?
Middleton, go ahead.
I have a contract in your folder between Adams County Youth Court and Helping Hands. It's the counseling service we use every year, it's just a renewal of our MOU with them to provide uh therapy, gain assessments to our clients.
Mr. President?
Is that Helping Hands?
Yes.
This is a turn. Have you reviewed it?
I've reviewed that very briefly, but it's the same one that they always do.
Yes, sir.
Show is the same one, I might tell you it's the same one, might slip and miss something that. I'm gonna make the most opinion you could do.
For Helping Hands, okay.
Right up in the ass.
Uh motion by Mr. Gray. Second by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh any, any names? Motion carried?
Thank you, that's all I have.
Would you let Mr. Belli know that we did that?
I sure will, thank you on his behalf and Judge Brown's behalf, everybody, thank you.
Good morning, my name is Haki Martin, I'm the Adams County Comptroller. I am asking for permission to hire uh for our council receiving position, Sharona Camows. She's been with Adams County five years and she's transferred from sanitation.
Move by Ms. Hutchins, second by Mr. Gray. Discussion? All in favor? Motion carried? Did that come with a pay increase or?
Yes, sir.
Paying loo?
Yes, sir.
Two hundred miles.
Veronica.
Drive. I was hoping I was right, okay. From seventeen dollars an hour.
Good morning, um we're showing by the Adams County Sanitation Department, so I'm just jumping in, so in replacing Sharona for the hour, I was gonna hire Melissa Campbell. Um I have a pay and loo form, reach out in just a second, uh we're bringing her in with an annual rate. It was appetized.
Did you get permission?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay. I I don't recall that.
I didn't even know that was a good point, I know we didn't.
Who did you get permission? Board and expert permission?
I I just went through my administrator, am I human resources?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know that until I was told, but.
And it and it was posted to them be same time that the other physician was posted?
So.
For for a council receiver.
What do she need to do to to make it right?
You know, you don't have to ever advertise any physician, it's always been Adams County's you know, policy to it, advertise to get everyone a equal chance of a job. Moving forward, she should get permission from the board, just that's how we do it, but it's not actually required to be done. Was it advertised for the requisite period of time to give people an opportunity to be hired, that's the question, if it was, you could proceed on with hiring or you know, you don't have to always get permission to get advertised by law, that's just something we like to know what people.
It's our policy to be advertised, so.
It's our policy to get advertised, so was it, was it?
They did do that.
They have done?
They did advertise it. Yeah, but I'm telling you, I'm saying wouldn't get it approved, it's our policy to do it. And I don't, I know why, I I mean, I didn't know how to advertise it, cause I've been I've been setting the budget until last week, however, we we had a pretty good idea that her clerk was going to move to uh to bookkeeping. And so I had told her that we would not leave her high and dry, that the candidate would stay with her. And then once we hired a position, we would move her over, so I think that was my fault in keep communicating, is that whenever that was done, it went in motion so that we could quickly move her clerk to bookkeeping and we could have her position immediately filled. So we're not adding, we only added one spot, which was in bookkeeping, and so we're just trying to fill another spot.
Let me ask a question. Uh I understand uh the urgency of trying to give her uh somebody that may assist her, but what what I don't wanna see happen is everybody else start doing the same thing.
I understand.
They start bypassing this board and just go on doing it on their own, and then we got to ratify what they're doing. Uh and she's still working with you. So we still have time to do it the right way, if that's the way y'all wanna do it, I mean, cause you 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 can't leave from over there until you you do it right. And how how long would it take? So I'm just, that's what I'm saying. How did you like when they come to call up?
They just didn't get that permission.
Right, right, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, it ain't right. I just don't want the rest of them to think that they can bypass this board and get something done, that's that's when it's gonna be a problem, that's all I'm saying.
Copy, we need to go through the motions, um you can let this pass and uh remind everybody that's not the way it's gonna be. We're gonna do it the right way.
It's up to the discretion of the board, I said legally you don't have to, it's always been our policy to get permission. But it was advertised and so it's up to the board, cause it's I don't think dog issues with the hiring is just a peroxys word involved, and you don't wanna set a bad precedent, so it means up to all, whether you wanna do that.
Well, Mr. Turner, let me tell you one thing, this is me, one supervisor. I wanna follow the handbook and we adopted. I don't wanna be deviating from the handbook and start doing something that the handbook don't say, that's the reason we adopted the handbook. It's not in the handbook.
But it should be in.
So move.
Is it in the minutes, can we do it this way?
It ain't in the handbook, so move.
Okay, move by Ms. Gray, second by Mr. Gaines. Discussion? In in the future, it needs to be done the way we've been doing.
I understand. Because it is, it should be in the minutes when we decided to do it that way.
All right, all in favor?
I've always approved advertised, but there's no exception, it says that it is advertised, we're always.
All in favor? Uh any names? Motion carried?
Okay, so also, I wanted to uh advise of the accounts we build this month, which is five thousand eight hundred and forty-one. Uh everyone has the regular rate, everybody's on one accord and.
Oh, oh, excuse me for myself, Mr. President?
Yes.
In in uh process of hiring or whatever thing maybe, did we get salary, did we get all this?
Sorry.
Yeah, I just gave you the pay and loo.
She had to, didn't wanna make it part of the.
Fourteen dollars an hour, twenty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars a year.
Thank you.
And um we didn't have very many uh discrepancies with trash this this month, uh just one or two when it rained real bad or whatever, they didn't get down the road and the sanit- and the satellite truck went and they got it. So that was it.
So the website's up and running?
Website, uh nobody's used it. But it's up and running.
Well, I'm now that you say that, I'm if you look on Adams County website, it's not very it's not full of information on anything, apparently, and I don't know um um it's if if that's something could be addressed, I mean, if you look on any other county's website, almost all the other counties, they got all this information, where you go, ours is up, almost blank. We need a website of a designer or something, cause we look like we're in the eighteenth century.
Would the volunteer say he put it on my, the sanitation tab, where we have important forms? They also have the form where you can actually put your complaint in for the sanitation department, and it comes directly to my email.
Okay.
And we tested it and it and it's gone through, and it goes to me and to the county infrastructure.
I feel like most people, they don't know about it, number one, a lot of people are not tech savvy and they just uh got tired of complaining, and the phone wouldn't get answered, so it's like it's a moot point. Okay, is that all?
That's it.
You're by, Mr. Gray.
Okay.
If they gonna act like that, he deserves to get it.
I ain't wanna, I ain't wanna interrupt you back there. Come on, the board, Brad, out there, Adams County, you're in Mr. Five, four, eight, I got a couple of things this morning. Uh vendors, uh for sirens, they'll be coming in today, so they'll start working on sirens on transition. Uh so the next couple of days, people are gonna start seeing sirens, hearing sirens going off. Uh that's due to their upgrade and they'll test them, so hopefully by the end of the week, we should be good on all our sirens in the county on there. And uh we're gonna send out a message, probably tomorrow, letting everybody know that they're gonna be testing, so uh individuals won't panic or nothing like that uh throughout the community on that. Um next, I want to request uh for us to apply for our FY twenty-six EMSOF grant. Um we have been cleared of our previous funding audit, we had an audit of that last week. Uh so we was able to provide our receipts uh to clear us up from the previous years on uh receiving that money. Uh we had had some hiccups in it, but we right back on the right track now. So I just need uh permission to board, from the board, to allow us uh to apply for that money for the FY twenty-six EMSOF grant.
All right, you heard the request. Moved by Mr. Jackson, seconded by Mr. Middleton, any discussion?
How much is it?
I think around like nineteen thousand, something eighteen, nineteen thousand, it varies every year.
What is the emergency to give?
The emergency medical services operating from EMSOF.
Thank you.
All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
Okay, uh, county minister, you gonna bring about the, the account for the five truck, you know, you gonna do your report, move one.
I think, I didn't hear that.
You gonna do that, for the five truck moves and money to that account we talked about?
Yeah, I think we already had permission to, um, open the new account, it was just how it needed to be styled, I checked the little net, that I need to follow up with her and just make sure that doesn't need to, 'cause I knew like, USDA, they're very, I'm not saying this is USDA, but like, they're particular about the style of the account, actually need to make sure we install it correctly, um, if they grow a lot of it, so.
And as far as, um, the county funds, I'll have, um, it'll be on a docket for the next meeting, or the transfer.
All right. All right. Next, uh, this is for the board, uh, they have a disaster leadership conference, uh, November eleventh, the fourteenth, I don't know if y'all got it, down in Luxon, Mississippi, uh, in the Boulder Varge, uh, the National Association of Insurance Commissioners, and Mississippi Department of Insurance, uh, putting on a summit, uh, to talk about disasters for city and county officials, how we get back to normal to doing disaster, insurance rates and things like that. So I signed it to a event, if any supervisor weren't there, I'll be attending it also.
How long is?
I think like two days, uh, like the eleventh, the fourteenth, but it's, uh, it's just traveling.
Did you send any of the documentation in for traveling, um?
No, I just let the board know, we gonna do it if, if the board, the board member wanna go.
Were you just running out there, you'll, you'll do that with?
Yeah, I'll be trying to see who, who wanna go, should not. I think supervisor Hutchins, you will be down next weekend.
Yeah. Okay.
That's all right.
All right. Appreciate it.
Do we need to do that? It would be nice for the board, need to do that?
It would be nice, you know, county minister or somebody, you know, somebody in leadership, because they're gonna talk about issues and how counties get, you know, kept out and that. But I can represent the county, y'all, I won't tell them I wanna go.
I'll be, I'll be with you.
Okay.
You got special paperwork next to me. This is my handout, um, you got them, okay, all right.
Good morning, uh, Samuel Martin, veteran service officer for the county, uh, want to let you guys know that I, I completed the annual training with the state this past week up at Oxford. Uh, found out that, uh, there's one more, uh, training class I have to go to, but it's an online class, shouldn't have been one of the day. Uh, and that will get me accredited nationally, so we can, I can look at the, uh, the national database. Working on the, uh, the turkey drive, got it, uh, scheduled for the twenty-second of, uh, November at the safe room. Just, uh, trying to get, uh, get the turkeys for the veterans. Also, uh, working on a, uh, working with an organization so they can have a, uh, veterans', uh, flame clinic. The first part of November, I'm just waiting for the lady to give me the flyers, so I'm just supporting, supporting that weekend. And that's all I have, unless, uh, you have anything for me?
All right, yeah, do you happen to know how many of those, uh, homeless people they're dealing with, or veterans?
No, no, I do not know, uh, but I will deal with Mr., uh, Captain B and some of that. Uh, the homeless veterans, it's, it's, uh, it's hard to keep track of, because some of them are in and out the county, and, uh, the ones that are in the county that I know of, uh, they've exhausted all that they can. They got dealt from, uh, resources before and didn't do right by them, so.
Okay, I'm just curious, thank yous.
But I'll get that number too.
Okay. Who's next?
I guess I'll go next. Good morning, board.
Good morning.
All I have is just a couple of, uh, time and service pay increases. One for, uh, Anthony Nettles.
Got it.
And the other one is for the Tina Walker.
All right.
And that's just, them being here, uh, six months, so no, no pay.
Anthony Nettles, and he's going to fourteen seventy-five from?
From fourteen, with the, with the new rates that y'all get.
Thirty, thirty thousand, six hundred and eighty, and then Latina Walker, fourteen seventy-five, thirty thousand, six hundred and eighty. Uh, been called my attention, and this is not the proper form, we're gonna be through these, but you need to get the right.
Oh, okay, just, it's like somebody emailed us, yeah, doesn't use it.
Okay, y'all, is this yours, is this Val, uh, Belinda Thomas?
That's not me.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's shared, you go ahead and let him do it.
I need that. I need mine.
All in favor on Anthony Nettles and Latina Walker's pay increase? Motion by, Mr. Middleton, seconded by Mr. Gaines, any more discussion? All in favor? Any names, motion carried.
Thank y'all.
Good morning, board. I wanna thank Ms. Lewis and Ms. Con for working through that audit, for that MSO stuff, because it's, uh, above my head, and I appreciate y'all, working on that, getting us free and cleared and in the green to go back and use that money again and not let it go way back to the state, 'cause, that was a, that was a huge undertaking, and I appreciate y'all. Uh, nine-one-one transport volume, three hundred and seventy-five requests, two hundred and thirty-six transports, at sixty-three percent. An average response time in the city of eight thirty-six for ninety-three percent, and the county at fifteen thirteen for eighty-nine percent. Uh, eighty-five refusals, which was over double what we had last month. Uh, we're seeing, to answer that, 'cause a couple of y'all looked up when I said that, uh, we're seeing repeated patients that we, we go to multiple times every month. Uh, it's, it's like an influx of those calls coming in, and we're getting to a point where we're gonna go before the nine-one-one advisory committee with a couple of those addresses, just because they never go. They'll request us eight, ten, twelve times a month, and they never go, they never take transport. Uh, so that's basically tying that truck up, when maybe they wasn't gonna go to begin with. Uh, so, next nine-one-one advisory meeting, we'll be discussing that and putting those addresses in with nine-one-one, the sheriff, and PD, and the appropriate areas that they're in. Uh, eight no patient files, twenty-four canceled prior to arrival, we had eleven psych responses and five assault responses. Uh, that's down a little bit on the psych, up a little bit on the assault. Uh, one hundred and thirty-nine multiple calls same time, and we had fourteen flights from the field, uh, notable flights. We had one crew member out in September, it was a confirmed COVID case, that's the first time that we've had one of those in about six months. And then, all said and done, uh, the total EMS requests for the month, that's five at N nine-one-one, nine fifty-two. Uh, did have one concern brought to my attention by Supervisor Hutchins, I provided her a written response to that, uh, uh, at that event, and that's the end of my report, unless y'all have questions for me?
I got a comment, y'all don't know if you know about this one.
I do, I do.
Well, I'm gonna tell you all what happened, um, so I pulled up our church the other day, we were there to do one thing. Um, six hours later, we left the church, so, it's cooler outside, I don't think too much about it, about nine o'clock at night, I think it was, both my legs cramped up so bad, I couldn't walk, on the floor.
Doesn't it be a howling?
So, so I had to call Dana, 'cause she was in the other end of the house, and I said, I need you to come in here, I can't get up, 'cause I literally could not move. So she called nine-one-one, your guys were there in like, seven minutes, I'm like, look, just, I need bags of fluid, that's all I need, I said, we can't do that. So, I got my first ambulance ride ever, uh, to the hospital, and got two, two bags, two and a half bags of fluid, and I was fine. I did however, have to check myself out, take my own ID out to leave, because they, they got busy in the flight, I was ready to call. But at any rate, your, your guys did great, Jody is just a great trainer, he, he had the two, two young girls, and it was her first time to ever drive the ambulance, and my first time to ride it, but they did an excellent job, and I just want to congratulate them.
I appreciate the feedback, he let me know like, two seconds before, come sliding in here.
Okay.
Yeah, he's like, I probably might get questioned, and I was like, what, what?
But it's not, it wasn't a question, I'm just telling you that, that, I, I've had transport, but never so bad that I couldn't stand up and walk, and I knew, I, I did that over, stack, and it hit my skin, but not go back down, I said, I'm in trouble.
Well, for the official record, when you get an heat exposure, a lot of people think that because they get their cells out of it and they cool down, it's immediately subsided. And typically, it's gonna be three to four hours after you've had the heat exposure, you've had time to get back home, you think you've hydrated enough, the problem is people hydrate with a lot of water. And you need some little, little more content in water to replace those, those electrolytes.
'Cause the cooler weather tricked me, 'cause it, I, I didn't feel like I got that, but I was running chainsaw and, all that stuff, but anyway.
Need to go over to Doctor Pepper's?
No, it wasn't. The Doctor Pepper's apparently started hydrating, so, thank y'all for mentioning that.
He's got one right here?
See, it's not hot in here, till just now.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next. Um, Mayor, are you, we're gonna have to go into exact session for you?
It, it won't take that long, but I have freed myself up, don't let me interrupt things.
I think we only have two more reporters.
Don't, don't let me hold up your mood, 'cause I know how it is.
Oh, we.
I, I had it eleven o'clock, but I have freed myself up.
Robbie's report won't take long, will it, Robbie?
Nah.
Okay.
Good morning, board.
Morning.
Um, President Wilson, you should have this, uh, got a price on a tree at eighty-eight pine mount, uh, a dead tree, um, the two prices, Thompson Tree Service was sixteen fifty, and, uh, Arborwood was sixteen hundred, I'd like to go over Arborwood also.
All right.
The tree, eighty-eight pine mount.
Tree at pine mount.
Dead tree.
Uh, low, low B at sixteen hundred with Arborwood, uh, motion nay by Mr. Middleton, seconded by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? Any names, motion carried?
And I bring it up every year, uh, Kempros coming in to do their, uh, winter spraying, um, it's in my budget, but I just bring it up, uh, it's fifteen thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars, uh, they gonna come in to spray roads ads, uh, for the winter, I just, I bring it up every year, just to, bring it to y'all's attention, uh, what things count, uh.
Okay, uh, do you need a motion for that?
No, I just bring it up. Uh, next thing I have is, uh, Greater St. James Baptist Church, uh, it's a nonprofit cemetery in Eldon, need to load the dirt, bring it up for the board.
All right, so, moved by Mr. Hudson, seconded by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor?
You should have that President Wilson, you have that, from you, that letter from them, and then you should have a letter in front of you from, uh, Colleen School about the pot huggers.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Just bring that before the board.
What do you want us to do?
Pack pot huggers, they just sent a written request, it's, you know, letter, he is that they have to.
So, sir.
Moved by Mr. Gaines, seconded by Mr. Middleton, any discussion? All in favor? Any names, motion carried?
Next thing I have, President Wilson's, uh, request for payment for twenty-five hundred and thirty dollars for tire grant.
Okay, you heard the request? Moved by Mr. Middleton.
Sure.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? Any names, motion carried?
Next thing I have is a, possibly, he does, I mean, it's possible illegal dump sale on cut-off road, that's Ms. Hutchins area, and I showed her the pictures this morning, just wanna get that approved before the board.
Moved, uh, Mr. Hudson, seconded by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? Any names, motion carried?
Thank you. Next thing I have, uh, President Wilson's, Kent Trail minor, uh, his six-month probation period's up, you know, do that, his rate of pay goes to sixteen eighty-three, you have that in front of you?
Yeah, thirty-five thousand, uh, six dollars and forty cents yearly.
Yes, sir.
You heard the request? Moved by Mr. Gaines. Seconded by Mr. Middleton.
Last thing I have.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any names, motion carried?
Last thing I have is, uh, replacing Devon Sims, uh, he's a CDL truck driver, he'll advertise his position.
Okay, uh, did he resign? Did we already do that?
Yes.
With last week?
No, he, he, uh, he, uh, the paperwork been done through HR now.
Okay.
He had a resignation letter?
No. Nation.
Okay. All right.
That's all I have, um, for the board.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, Robbie, uh.
Uh, talk, one second, any motion for you to advertise for that position?
I did, you didn't know, it's how they talk.
You didn't? Anthony, motion, Gaines, seconded. Everybody put in. Go ahead, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Grant.
This is President, um, Cutzulane, uh, arrived over there today, but you can't go on there, 'cause it looks like somebody, uh, created an illegal dump site. Thank you.
All right.
Good, okay, Mr. Gaines, I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. Dollar, can we, uh, do we have any, uh, I know we had no litter signs, but I would ask at the beginning of Broadmoor, that you asked if we had started to keep Broadmoor beautiful sign right there?
Coming down the hill, we have some no litter signs right there.
And that's what we do, I just wanna make sure that's what we do, we can, with this.
It should still be there, but I'll, I'll see.
Yeah, and they, I think they might be able to do it or something like that, and I was gonna talk to the sheriff, I think, about their two-week rotation, but to pick it up for them, 'cause I mean, that's just a hot spot, and, and right here on, on Saturday field, uh, Roger, uh, you know, close to Mr. Howard Sherman right there, you know what a big drainage here for the road wash down there, six days, two years ago? I, I have noticed, uh, over the last, uh, couple of weeks, uh, it's getting deeper and deeper, so something is going on under there. Uh, right nearby, his house right there, right at the trailer, what was right there?
That's where we put the crossfire?
Where you put it, the big crossfire, it's been there a long time. So it's all the way up. Right nearby the trailer, you know, we had it, I, I, I knew you, you was here, I was a supervisor, and then it was back, we dug up, uh, the road right there, and, uh, someone down there, something gotta be going on under there, he's got a void, and it was a little fun, but I know it was over the weekend, it's, it is getting deeper and deeper. So we definitely need to check that out. That's where the main drainage come across and go, uh, across the road there.
I have one more thing, I have a motor grader, uh, gonna come off a live accident in November twenty twenty-five, which is next month, and I'd like to, uh, get permission to advertise for it even once a week. So that one goes off.
Moved by Mr. Middleton, seconded by Mr. Hudson, any discussion? All in favor? Any names, motion carried? Robbie, um, this letter you gave me is for Mr. O'Brien, I'll need to give it to him, to show him what the.
Yes.
Protocol is, take a road.
The rigs out there, uh, for, for, that they wanna make, uh, or asking.
If you look at that road?
Yes, they're both in bad shape, and it's, uh, it's, it's gonna take a lot.
Okay, I'm very, okay, uh, one more thing, uh, Sheriff, I sent some, uh, pictures to, uh, Shane yesterday, did you, did you see those? The, some bunch of trash bags thrown on Kingston Road, not exactly sure where, but their names were in the bag, they're probably still there, um. Um, they denied whoever called them about it, denied they were theirs, but, uh, if you need the pictures, I can send them to you, or you can give them to Shane.
He probably handled it himself, but if he mangled in the bag, we can deal with it.
Okay, um, yours, and I, I, I wanna know, while you're, while I'm asking you this, and the mayor's right here too, what happened to programs in schools about litter? Don't litter, are there any grants, so the police officers can go to the schools, or, or your deputies can go to school and, and talk to children about litter? The children control the parents in this case, I remember those, those from way back in school, and it really helped, but we have got a serious litter problem. Just walking around the one block that I live in, down Main, St. Charles, back upstate, and, and back to my house, I picked up a whole fifty-five gallon bag of trash, just in that one loop. Um, that's probably what started that problem with my, of dehydrating the day before. Yes, sir.
I agree somewhat, but this is me saying that this litter problem is beyond just kids, you got grown folks who don't know how to deal with kids.
That's what I'm saying, but the kids will get on the parents. I mentioned that when, when I was talking to somebody the other day, and they said, my grandson busted out me in, in front of everybody about, I figured some gun out the window or something. It was funny, but then, yeah, my, my mom says it's okay, throw a pack of rice in there, or, you know, it's biodegradable or something, well, no, it's not, but we used to really harp on that. I remember in school, every year, somebody would come talk to us about it, they'd have litter bags hanging on your cigarette lighter in your car, you know, now everybody just gets through eating, and it goes right out the window. And they, and, and the other remark was, well, they're gonna prison or something today. No, because you might be that prisoner one day, because you litter.
Then you don't show up in court, then.
Okay. Does anybody got anything else for Robbie, that really wasn't really for Robbie, but I know he has to deal with a lot of it.
Good morning, board. Um, three updates, uh, Burke Road, we've been asked to revise the legal and platid script, uh, platid and legal descriptions by their new survey review, and, uh... My survey has been in contact with the gentleman that's over right now, and he's made the necessary revisions. Unfortunately, that person is currently not working, uh, for the next three weeks, so once he come back, uh, we'll get that reviewed, but in the process, since we have to do the same thing on Burke, we have to do the same thing on York, since they're responsible for the same property. So my, uh, survey is currently working on York Road to get that one done, the design for, for the box is complete, we just have to do the revision to the platid and legal description for those. Um, it relates to EWP zero, C zero four five, that's Old Highway eight and four sites number one and four, uh, Kingston Road and Dunbar. The contractor's complete with the, both the Old Highway eight and four sites, and he should be nearing completion with the Dunbar site, once they get finished with the installation of the pipe and the drifts enough that's required around the site. And so they have submitted their first estimate for that project in an amount of five hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty cents. Uh, so requesting board authorization to, uh, pay that invoice for the first invoice for EWP C zero four five.
Moved by Mr. Gaines. Second by Ms. Hutchins, any discussion?
I just want to say, I will say, Robert, that I, I went out, uh, me and Scott went on a ride, so me and Scott rode out, well, a couple of weeks ago, and he did, uh, they went and did a great job, and he completed two of them, uh... And he's seventy-five percent through, thirty-three month, and it looks like they're, uh, what, and Robert's satisfied, and they're doing a great job, and I ain't taking long time.
He does great, he does great work, I always have, okay, any more discussion?
Yeah, Morgan Town Road too, so, uh, it'll be good.
All in favor? Any nays, motion carried?
In addition to that, we're requesting payment for the engineering estimate in an amount of sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighteen cents.
Moved by Mr. Bill, uh, Gaines, you must be going second now. Second. Uh, Ms. Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? Any nays?
And the last thing is, and the last thing, request authorization to prepare the reimbursement request for that project.
Moved by Mr. Gaines, second by Ms. Hudson, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any nays, motion carried?
Once the contractor completes Dunbar, he's gonna move and take care of the two Kingston sites that's on C zero four five, and it's one of the one on C zero seven nine, and then he will complete the equipment road site, so you have C zero four five and C zero seven nine completed, uh, within the next month and a half.
Okay.
Alright.
So, you have to re-engineer the bridge of Burke, of Burke Road?
No.
Or design it or whatever?
No, so, you know, we have to, we have to acquire right away or get easement for, and so we initially...
Most of the one we already have.
So we submitted it, got approved, then once we, uh, then I requested a fifty-year easement or whatever, so we had to submit back to wildlife officials. When we sent it back, they had a new survey review, was that the initial plat was not in, in their format they would like, so we asked us to revise the format of the plat and legal description.
Okay, um, how many bridges do we have currently out, Robbie and, and the county?
Four is completely out, we got Dorpe Road, Burke Road, which we put the temporary in, uh... Then I know when you say out, this one's not out, but the board give you, they all give us permission on the Low Water Bridge Road, uh, that was one of the bridges that, uh, county wanted to, uh, fix, so you working on that one, aren't you, Mr. Ford?
Yeah, we're working on that one.
Okay, um, and we're all on the, on the state aid roads that, uh, are you waiting on us to pick the roads that we're, we wanna work on?
Right, so I submitted the estimate to everyone last week, uh, showing the, the projects that are available under the state aid projects, they have previous projects on, so those projects don't want to do maintenance, they can go and do overlay project, or we can do a fragment project, uh, because they have previous projects on, and the cost is associated with each one of those.
Just from my knowledge, the state aid money doesn't go away, or, or doesn't, it just, it just builds, it builds up, we...
The state aid money does not go away, just the state aid money, now the LDP money will go away, we don't use it, but the state aid money...
Do we have any of that? Right now, it's in anger?
State aid money?
Oh, yeah.
LDP, yeah, so you, yeah, you lost some, but of course, that was because you didn't have nothing made in the first place, so when we did Low Water Bridge, the county said they would spend the two million dollars on the bridge to get a program approved. And so what they do is, once the project is approved and ready for funding, they'll go out into a pool and pool that money into paper that project. That makes sense.
Okay. And, and, I guess anytime where in anger loses money, and that, please call it to our attention, because it's out there, we need to spend it, um, or we lose it. Anybody else got anything?
And by the way, I sent out, I sent out on last week that, um, the status of fund for the project, I will submit a new, because right after I sent that email, I got another status of fund from state aid, so it was more money in the council, which one of those, your state aid, your LDP, as well as your state aid bridge project, so I will re-submit a revised, uh, form.
Mr. President, you...
Yeah, when, uh, when will we be ready to get the car before?
Burke Road?
The real rap, we're, I'm ready on my behalf, I'm sorry, I'm ready on, yeah, we're ready, the county's ready. I was ready to slope this, so when everybody wants to be in it.
What I wanna do is, since the project probably is blown out and been built back, I'm gonna send my survey out and check the elevation compared to what we did on first initiative time, and then if everything is within reason, then we will move forward authorization to, we will move forward advertising. So at this point, I can request authorization to advertise the project pending.
Alright, moved by Mr. Middleton, second by Mr. Gaines, uh, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried?
Last thing I have is Morgantown Road, contractor will be prepared, was prepared to strip Morgantown Road today due to the weather, they were not able to, so they anticipate coming out tomorrow and striping the road, uh, doing the grassing, that's required, any cleanup, and then we can hold a foundation special for the phase two of Morgantown Road, and that's from Dixie Road to Redwood. And then the last thing I have is, uh, we did get approval for phase one, so I'm requesting authorization to advertise phase one of Morgantown Road, and that's from the state maintenance sign to Dixie Road.
So, move.
Great, second by Mr. Gaines, uh, any discussion?
Mr. President, yeah, I'm so glad we made a motion to advertise, Mr. Gaines can attest to this, we got all kind of rules going out, that the county stopped right there, so we ran out of money, we don't have no money, and all this kind of stuff, so I guess you'll figure out, we got money to do.
Well, I think they're, they're gonna be happy and sad at the same time, because when the detour start, it's, it's gonna be, uh, 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 Zieg trying to get out of there, it's like, but, hey, it is, it's, it's gonna be worse on this face, but anyway. Uh, any more discussion? All in favor? Any nays, motion carried?
Um, are there any questions coming up?
I, 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 Mr. President, uh, as long as the gang inside of the building anyways, dealing with their state aid money, I had mentioned, and I think, I don't know if Mr. Gaines is gonna nap, about using some of that money trying to evade their problem, or what is his name, in the church? The church, and what they got named, always coming here?
Uh, Tom, you're definitely, yes, you're definitely.
Is there any kind of way that we could probably do something that funded to evade that drainage problem that they have?
So that's one of the things we talked about that previously, since it's not inside of an approved section, we can, but we would have to go and do a survey to make sure the road meets current state aid requirements, if it's not, that property will have to include, do whatever necessary to bring it to state aid's location.
So that's not state aid road?
That portion may not be an improved, it's not a part of an improved portion of the state, it might just state aid road, but it may not have been a previous project on.
They're taking...
Okay.
Thank you all.
Alright, um...
Thank you.
This time, I really wanna, um, go into executive session with the mayor, so he can get, get on with his thing.
I'm the last one.
Well, we still got a bunch of other folks here too, and you guys sat here anyway.
I'm good.
You don't have to go to work, this president, I'm good.
You're the last one, uh, Sheriff, go ahead, you go ahead with your, I'll be here, so let go here. Is this, uh... Yeah, I'll be here, so... Alright, we need to go into... Public hearing. I need a motion to go into public hearing. Moved by Mr. Middleton, second by Ms. Hutchins, all in favor? We're now in public hearing, Mr. Slower?
Yeah, the first one is zero, Ruby Drive, PBIN's twenty-seven oh forty, twenty-seven oh forty-one, twenty-seven oh forty-seven, twenty-seven oh forty-nine, twenty-seven fifty, and twenty-six twelve. Groker Yelton is the listed property owner of that property, uh, see.
Come out on, uh, I think he didn't cut that one.
I thought it had been, but I wasn't a hundred percent.
I, I think he didn't cut it.
Has he cleaned this up now?
I think he didn't cut it, I didn't ride by there, I, I met with him the other day, he said he had cut it, but I had someone else do, so I didn't go verify what he said.
The last time you saw it, had it been cut?
I just met with him the other day.
I know, we could adjudicate it, and if he's cut it, then not move forward, if he hasn't cut it, so that's why I'm asking, the last time he saw it, it was in pretty bad shape, though.
That's been a while back, though.
I know, but to the way...
It was in bad shit, did it?
Yes, sir.
So I better need to...
We need to adjudicate it a menace, if he's cleaned it, we just want to look back to next meeting that it's been cut.
Alright.
Because even after it's adjudicated menace, you still have a reason to, um, clean it up.
We're gonna do these separately, that, that one first? Okay, I need a motion. Moved by Mr. Middleton, second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? Any nays, motion carries?
One Pine View Drive? One Pine View Drive, one Pine View Drive? No one's here on Pine View Drive?
One Pine View Drive? What's the name of that, I ain't, this is my ears.
Betty Gales Minor?
I, I don't even know, bring that to you.
We have twenty-one Brasswell Road? You're here on twenty-one Brasswell Road? Would you state your name, please?
Well, he, oh, 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 she's complaining, but, uh, the man owns it, so he's, he needs it.
He's a landlord?
He's the man, though.
Yes, sir, that's right.
Go, please, state your name, address.
I'm, I'm the one that's the landlord.
Yes, but she's the man, he's the man, that's it.
My name is James Stewart, and I own the property there, uh, she's complaining about, uh, there's some weeds, and it hadn't been, you know, bush hog, uh, you know, uh... Just kinda growing up some, but I had begun to, uh, clean up some of the property, because, you know, bush hog, we get little weeds, few little trees, nobody's staying there, nobody will be staying there, but, I mean, I will be getting it cleaned up. And I don't, I guess she might want a fence line, you know, on my side, kinda kept clean, you know, so, uh, I guess, and I had, you know, uh, she put a new fence up, I, you know, cleaned most of the fence line off, uh, just for a, a small little section, and some of the debris that was on her side, I let the guy push it over, a few little trees over on my side, but I can't go along downside the fence, approximately five feet, in some areas and more, in others, you know, but, I mean, I had already been coming to clean it up, or at least, you know, keep the rest cut.
Okay, do we still need it?
Yeah.
Okay. Who's left the lady to speak, uh, behind, what's your name now?
I'm Angela Dawson.
Nineteen seventy-eight and nine.
Angela.
I own that, my name is Sheila Dawson.
She ain't Sheila Dawson?
I own the property next to the end, as a matter of fact, we all in love, let me see, we share a property land of over nine hundred acres, and, uh, I just spent a lot of money repairing the fence between our properties, and he's got, uh, dead tree limbs that's falling on the fence, and I'm not physically able to. I'm having to pay someone to come out and repair the fence, that his tree limbs are falling and breaking down, because he's made his property overgrown. Now, I've got weeds like three foot high, you can't even see the buildings over there, he's got illegal storage, junk motor vehicles, and my yard is just full of frogs, I don't know where the frogs come from, but I got them ranging from size of a quarter to big as my knee and almost, and they just literally, what, about three weeks ago, I came, my, there was a six foot snake on my back porch. Uh, they wouldn't even run around there, they would poof me. So, you know, I mean, he is, I'm here to make sure that he continue to clean this property up. Now, he did make an effort to start the parkway, he did go out there and bush hog that area, but I'm thinking this winter is coming up, so when the winter time come, the fog is so bad, it'll be easier for him to get up in there and do something, but I wanna make sure that he do good, because, you know, I spent thousands of dollars repairing that fence between our property, and it didn't even, it didn't contribute financially at all, it all went on him, but it benefits him in ways, but I need him to be able to maintain, help me to maintain it, because I'm not able, he got heavy equipment and all that stuff, and I'm tired of messing with James, I've been chasing him for a year now.
Finally caught him.
I called him today.
Yeah, well, yeah, he's here, and he's here, and he had made a, a, a start, and Mr. Stewart, he gonna keep, he gonna keep on, you improve, get it out, take care of, and go back, so...
How long you think you need to do, get it cleaned? How long, how much time?
How much time, I can eat, go on, cut it out.
Well, uh, I mean, I got most of it.
You know, how to, showing process, this is a long process, so he gonna need some time to get it done.
But you need to continue.
Yeah, like about every three months, uh, come in and make sure that he's making progress, I mean, I don't expect for him to have a whole thing cleaned, because exactly, I don't think he had the money to do that, that's, because, I mean, what I'm saying is...
So, so, as you can continue to clean up, and I thank God this worked, uh, one, two months.
We give him, it's a reasonable time.
A reasonable time for this three months, so.
Well, 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 just.
Bring it back in three months, and let me see if progress.
I'm, I'm trying to ask you, if you, if you continue to improve with that three months and then you can come back and check, and we can make sure that it's being improved and improved, so, you know, I think that's a reasonable thing, but we'll have to adjudicate to make sure that you'll come back in three months and check, and as long as you working, we give you opportunity to clean it up.
Is that gonna be your motion?
Yeah, that'll be a motion.
Motion, bye.
And that, that one, come.
Yeah, well, I mean.
We can have more discussion, but it's gonna be a motion. For a second, by Mr. Gray.
I mean, you have, have like, uh, large trees, you know, that would be still there, so what's gonna be cleaned up is a bush hog, and kept bush hog is to open the areas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And everybody's driving, yeah.
Even in the back part.
And that's why, and that's why we can, we can come back, if you come back, you continue to do that, make a little progress, and three months we come back, as long as you keep moving till we get it cleaned, you make the progress, we get it cleaned, and that'll satisfy her, cause she said that as long as you cleaning up, you have made it, she wanna make sure you continue, and I think if we can do that, that'll satisfy both y'all, and we can move forward.
All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carries. Can I understand we adjudicated it? They're gonna be watching, make sure you're doing what you're supposed to, so we don't have to come out here.
I'll be back if we don't.
I believe you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Hey, ma, make sure you get the car on the side where she did start on that.
Right, yeah, that's.
Get all the trees, uh, ever since I've been here twenty-five years, I ain't no mother, you cutting down on trees, I'm just being honest with you.
Right, okay, next owner, Jan, at one thirty-five Tubman Lane?
Tubman Circle.
Circle, huh?
One thirty-five Tubman Circle, one thirty-five Tubman Circle, anyone here for that?
Who's owner of that, uh?
The tax records indicate police A Matthews.
All right, uh, no one's here, uh, making a motion that we, you can tell if it gets cut by the.
What, is that your, that's your, uh, district?
It is.
And what did it look like last time you looked at?
It was growing up pretty bad. Robbie, you seen it? Backyard's terrible, isn't it?
So, are we gonna put, cut it and put it on their property?
Yeah, how long would it, how long should a reasonable time, you think, could be cut in a week? The landlord?
Have you reached out to the landlords?
They've got notice to be here, other than that, I've not had any contact with them.
Two weeks.
Like the sign's been posted in the yard and all.
So, you've sent them the notice?
Yes, sir.
Was in?
We put a sign in the yard, we put a sign in the courthouse, we sent a letter to them, to the property owner, and anyone else.
I personally like you to cut it as soon as possible, cause the neighbors complain a lot, they, they try to keep their houses up, and I'm able of, uh.
So, in a week? Give them a week, and then they can do it?
Yes.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Sir.
Second by Mr. Miller. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any names? Motion carries.
Next one. Anyone here for twenty-eight Davis Court? Twenty-eight Davis Court. Which district is that in?
It might be one.
That's the one.
Is that where, uh, uh?
Yeah, that's one, that's all, play plan.
Let me go to him.
Are you taking, are you taking?
Take out there and get him, Rock, tell him you need to come in here.
Twenty-eight Davis Court.
Uh, twenty-eight Davis Court, I drove through the other day, uh, seeing like it had been taken, it had been taken care of, uh, they had moved the cars out, out of that, and pretty much vegetation down, every time I looked at vegetation, but, uh, I went through the other day, he had, uh, moved all the cars he was working on, so they've been moved.
Great, so we can take that one off, supervisor?
Yeah.
Uh, seventeen Ratcliffe Road. And we'll do that one together, is the other one?
Ten.
Ten Ratcliffe Road.
I've got pictures of my property, and I'll talk to him, what's wrong with it.
On ten?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, I remember about seventeen, I don't know, about ten, I don't see.
Yeah, we drove by that one yesterday, didn't see anything wrong with it then?
I didn't see anything.
Uh, seventeen, just seventeen, you seventeen?
Seventeen Ratcliffe Road.
Aren't you a neighbor of Ratcliffe?
Yes. How?
How was seventeen then?
That is pictures before anything's done to it.
I just wanted to say that, um, I'm Bonnie Pace, and I live at twenty-eight Ratcliffe Road, right across from Tina, and I wish this whole thing hadn't have been started, because it's, it's lagged on for two and a half years, and.
Not with my property.
No, not with your property, but, but the whole thing started out because of all the accumulated junk at ten, ten Ratcliffe Road, and not only the, the junk, but also the traffic that we had, and it had just totally gotten out of hand, we had people coming and going at all hours of the day and night, and Johnny was working on their vehicles in the middle of the road, and I just wanted something done about that, I'd never dreamed that Johnny was gonna lose his property or anything, I, and he keeps telling me, I hate him, I don't hate him, I just wanted him to clean this mess up, and as far as Tina goes, the only reason why she was brought into it was the next thing I knew, Johnny had somebody spend one whole night hauling stuff all night long down to his mother's house, and all I could see was that Johnny's mother's house was gonna be Johnny's new place to live, and his new place to work on cars, and his new place to, to have his op- office people gather, but I never meant for her to get fined, or to lose her property or anything, and I never meant to, um, cause any problems anywhere else.
So, seventeen is not a problem on your, in your street?
Pardon me?
Seventeen Ratcliffe is not a problem on your street?
No, I mean, when, when I, when I called and called and talked to Mr. Slaver, and they put the sign up, they quit moving stuff to her lot, so now it's fine.
It's clean?
I, it has been cleaned the last few days, but the way those pictures look, y'all can tell, my yard don't look bad.
No.
It is a mess under the carport, I've lived there for forty-something years, people's gonna have a trash pile, I admit it, it is my son's, and I let him bring stuff down there, and he brought it down there a year and a half ago, whenever he's, whenever the night that she's preferring to, I'm in a hotel, cause I had a tree limb to fall on my house, and I been out of my house, I've got construction going on in my house right now, I have no idea what was going on, I spent a month and a half in a hotel because of my house baggage.
But he did spend one entire night.
And that time I was.
Somebody go back and forth bringing garbage.
And I was not even there that.
Hold up, hold up, you talk here, um, okay.
But my, my thing is too, but cause she called Mr. Slaver.
Slaver, yes.
And he goes and puts a sign in my yard, why didn't anybody come out there and look at my yard? Because my yard ain't that bad, and they, y'all got the same identical letter to me, word for word, that's in my son's name, I mean, it says, I've got a flatbed eighteen wheeler in my yard, I do not have a flatbed trailer in my yard, I do not have a bunch of abandoned cars, I've got one truck, and it's stuck up inside of the bank up there.
Well, I think, I think what this has done is.
It has embarrassed me.
I understand, but you've been put on notice that his stuff can't land in your yard, cause all you're gonna do is, is gonna, is gonna come back on you.
But this has embarrassed me in my neighborhood, it's embarrassed me to my family, to my church family, here, I'm missing a day's work today to come and do this, and it ain't nothing wrong, somebody should have came out there, looked at my yard, before ever putting a sign in my yard.
Mr. Lawler.
If they'd have, if they'd have come out.
Hold on, hold on a second, you gotta let Mr. Lawler.
About a month ago, Mr. Lawler, I come by, and you pull in where your front porch is, to the right of your front porch over there, did your son start hauling tires and stuff, and, and pounding it up right there?
He had four, five cars of the tires up there.
I've been by there, and I've looked at it, and I saw it, the same thing when they brought it in here, he is moving stuff, as, as the lady said, from the top of the hill down, and moving it over there.
Is that believable?
Well, what, what it is, is moving from one, as she said, and I don't really wanna say it, from one junk pile to the next, and you have really made a mess out there in that acre foot up on that hill, we have been two and a half years dealing with you, I've come by, been super nice to you, we probably hauled three thousand tires off from up on that hill, I don't know how many you can get up there at a time, and it continues to be more, and you know that, me and you've talked, and we've talked, and we've talked, and we've talked, and I told you I was gonna try to help you, do what we could do, but it's to the point, I can't help you anymore, I can't, and I'm not gonna say I can't, the board's gonna tell me whether we can or not, we have hauled more tires off from that place than we can get got, and I understand, but it's more showing back up as we haul them off, and I can understand the frustration with this, and I can understand the frustration with your mother, I mean, every mother loves their child, they gonna do what they can do, no matter what, but still in all, don't move it from yours to your mom's, and it's , I understand it's a few things, but yours started as a few things before you started, and it kept on going, and all.
Hold up, hold up, ma'am.
Hold up, man.
Mr. Lawler?
Hold up.
All, all this serves here is that now your son knows that he cannot carry that stuff to your yard, and, and jump your yard up like his drunk junker, that lady is about to have a stroke over, and now you're upset about it, and you're gonna get sick over it, just, it's got to stop, and it's gotta stop with you.
Yeah, I done had.
You have to stop it.
I done had.
That's why, I don't, I didn't know that, but I don't want you to get upset about this, if, if, cause this is not the board coming down on you, but this is a, this is a way, a, a way for us to get where we need to be with you, because, you know, the last time you were in here, I warned you that you cannot continue to bring tires in, we know you're getting paid to pick up the tires and bring them in, and then we're getting have to pay to haul them off.
Amen.
When you got paid them, they don't.
They don't get paid to haul tires in.
I'm gonna ask a question, we got the mayor here today, so can I ask a question? Mayor, do we have anything in the city ordinance prevent the people like Firestone and all these people that get rid of tires to, do they have a dump place to take them, or can anybody come pick them up and take them in the count?
As you know, that this actually is violation of D E Q and state law, and, and tires can only be disposed of in approved locations, um, ironically, we just had discussion last week of trying to get together, uh, countywide, citywide cleanup, uh, for some time in the next few months, we did that a year or two ago, and very few people showed up with anything for dumpsters that we spent money on, um, but no, you cannot put tires just out in the garbage or anywhere, in fact, uh, it can poison, you know, groundwater, and it, and also, uh, it's a health hazard, because tires that are sitting around collect water, and it's a breeding ground for mosquitoes, and so, we encourage everyone to just please, when you, uh, uh, get tires, uh, make sure that your dealer takes the old tires, and, uh, and if you have some around the house, uh, somehow there are some, I don't have all that information with me, but there are some resources out there to help you get rid of tires.
Well, if you don't mind me saying so, my son just got four brand new tires on his vehicle, and he had to pay five dollars per tire to have them disposed.
That is true.
President Wilson, we just, of all of these.
Let me ask, President Wilson.
This man.
Scott, I know we have something in place with these tires that we've been doing from years back, that we put in place that they cannot have these tires on their property, or you can dispose them in a certain place, so.
Think of our waste plan?
Yeah, so my thing is, we have something in, in place ourselves for that, tires are not supposed to be on property piled up like that.
Isn't that a place that's authorized by N D Q for tire waste?
Where is that?
Where's that, it's probably any landfill that's accepted.
Well, we've been hauling for the last two and a half years, I think it's, I've been hauling for members of the law, I'm not trying to be, we should have, I've talked to him, and I've asked him not to bring anymore, matter of fact, what I think, we gonna put a camera out there, I had done it, to start watching, cause I can tell when I go by, when it's more tires have been there, and then you bringing more out to the road, I, I don't know where you getting them from, or whatever, I'm not pulling that far to get into it, but two and a half years, we should have had every tire on that property gone, you ain't got but an acre sitting there, and it burnt one time, so most of them burned up at that time, when it caught on fire, we had to carry county roads around, brush the roads around, if, all the neighbors places on fire through there, and that's a hazard to every neighbor you got, and you get, I'm gonna get it, I'm gonna get it, I'm gonna get it, I'm gonna get it, two and a half years later, we're still sitting right here, and it still looks same since the end of the day, we really started.
So, I'm, I'm just, so, you know, we gotta figure out something to actually get this to stop, you know, and that, nobody's trying to push, uh, cause I mean, it's hard on everybody, but we gotta understand, if, when the board be fair with you, and not just you, you see, we just did a, another adjudication, where two neighbors come here, and they came up with a plan, we have been, for I know since I've been here, I've been dealing with this, dealing with that, and we have been definitely, uh, open and giving a bunch of opportunities, but I, I ride, and I was out there, what, two weeks ago, and I know what we cleaned up, part of this plan that we had, trying to help you with it right now, for the, I said, okay, you don't have anywhere, we gonna let the road department come in, and I know we hauled tires and tires that don't have a jack count, trying to help, but I do know this, not, not, not deny that, you know it, and everybody else know it, that's here, that since we cleaned up, tires are coming from somewhere, you know what I'm saying, they not, they don't just naturally appear out there, they come, I'm not saying where they come from, I'm not even accusing you, I'll, I'll, because you've been here, your mama's been, uh, here with you, she's been sitting, Miss Pace has been here, and at some point, what can we do to stop this problem? I'm not following, you know, like, something has to happen to try to stop this problem, and we can move forward, cause it's been, it's been at least two to three years, and you know, y'all been in here, your model, you've been here supporting him, and every time you come here, we have tried to, tried to give an opportunity to get it right, that is, oh, we gotta try to do it right.
I wa- I want it, that's okay, it's like, I wanna hear, what, what are you, what's your opinion?
My name's John Delaure, I live at ten Ratcliffe Road, three years ago, or two and a half years ago, I was down on my work, covered, everybody was down, I started hauling tires into my place, selling them, I'm not a tire salesman, I don't like doing tires, but I do like to eat, they let me work around here, so I made my own work, out of people's garbage that they throw out, okay, I don't draw no benefit, I don't get no pensions or social security, no nothing, matter of fact, I had a huge hospital visit, they told me draw disability, cause I got. Matter of fact, I had a huge hospital visit, they told me to draw disability, because I got, well, my spine and stuff. With, with all this, all that, I bust my, boy, I was there. Bitching tires for a little or nothing. I got tires everywhere, trying to survive. It has got out of control, it has got to put them, walk around there. So I didn't have no problem with complaining, but she made them. It did look bad, I agree. I have been more than in compliance with trying to clean it up. I'm a single man, by myself, good there. And all my stuff, it's been got burnt from cleaning the place up. My house, three campers, six automobiles, I don't have no way to go, I don't have no place to live, I don't have no money coming in. And I still find a time and a way to get up here to this meeting. I don't have time to come up here and swab about what looks bad, what looks good. I know it looks bad, I know it needs to be cleaned up, I know it's a hazard. I didn't realize it at first, but I'm just, find a way to make it. Now, I haul tires, they'll haul tires, thank y'all. I appreciate all the help you do there. It's hard for me to find anybody to help me. It's hard for me to find a way to haul the tires off, that's why they piled up out by the road. It's why you keep thinking I'm hauling tires in there. I'm not hauling tires in there, you can check the dates. All your, the tire on my property is dry, like, it's probably ten years old. There's nothing there that's been hauling in there. I mean, I might have picked up a tire or two here and there. I can count on my two hands, in two and a half years.
Brought how many tires around there? It's rough, yes.
I can get with Jeff up here, and we've hauled several thousand tires away. Jeff gets, uh, that truck I hauled, I know with what I signed, he'll go to do, it was hauled about four hundred a truckload. And, and Jeff's got several, 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 several truckloads out there, and he piled them up. He was gonna build a fence, he was gonna stop doing mechanical work out on the road, he was gonna stop doing all the fences back there. Vehicles was back out on the road last time I was out there. Uh, and I stopped talking to you every time, you know that, and I tell you, I try to work with you, because they, you know, I'm getting asked. Your neighbors are complaining, and I don't blame them, I live next to you, I can blame them. But what I'm saying is, it's got to be going, and, and they're trying to help you, and you keep saying you helping them, but it's, it, it looks like it's getting worse.
He ain't got no way to haul them in.
Somebody, somebody bringing them in, I know this happens in tire shop. Every time I go buy a tire, they charge me five or six dollars disposal fee. Okay, what do they do with those tires? Now, some of these shops do the right thing. The other shops hire people that are on crack, or meth, or whatever, to take, haul the tires off, and they go throw them in the ditch somewhere, down in Kingston, in the Hudson. Some of them are bringing them to your place, I believe. I don't know if they're paying you to get rid of them or not. Right, it, it, that is not a business model. That's a criminal, that's a criminal enterprise, is what that is.
I don't know, the tires that I get are from behind the.
They, they don't, but they're not just appearing overnight, I mean, I'm just like, showing up there. I understand, but they're not just showing up there all by themselves?
I'm getting by the door.
Some, some people are dropping down there, or? Why are you stacking them up? Are we supposed to pick them up?
We still pick them up from two days ago.
So we must pay ten thousand dollars picking up tires from your place?
Like, they just stacked them out there, because they told you to stack them, and they will come and pick them up, so they're gonna be stacked.
You said exactly what I was, you say they charge you for your time.
To dispose of the lot of tires.
Do that and turn around and have somebody else to come pick it up and dispose of, that ought to be legal.
It is legal, but we have to catch them.
No, 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 no. They need to be in place for the businesses not to do that. They need to have, just like a contractor come to do a house, he gotta get a permit, he gotta say, well, he finna take this stuff too. Those, those businesses should be able to do the same thing.
It ought to be documented, what you're doing with those tires.
And you don't have.
Only way you can keep up with it. I don't know if we can create a ordinance that, that. Whether the city can do it, or whether the county can do it, or the state can do it, but those tires need to be kept up there.
They paid you to haul many of their tires away from their companies?
No, they had none.
They let you get them, they ordered to haul them in the back.
But you, you say you don't have any way to get them, though.
So.
So how do they get out there?
But, but this, this matter, uh, uh, President Wilson, excuse me for cutting you off. And, you know, I, I, I really like to be straight, and, and I hate to feel like, uh, I'm a jack, you know what? There's no possible way that the tires that's been hauled off from your place. And when I was out there a week ago, there's no possible way that you could have that minimal tire. I was there when it burnt. We walked there, I was there when, when they was walking the neighborhood, you know, I talked to y'all, y'all was missing the dogs, and it was missing somebody. I was out there in the area then, I seen what was burnt, and we trying to do everything we can to help you. But if you say that ain't no tires been hauled off, if you can count on your finger, something is mighty wrong. That makes me feel like, but, because I'm trying to help you. I know out there right enough outside the road, and I, and I was out there, what, two weeks ago, week, one week ago? Not a week ago, if we wrong by there, it's there been five hundred tires out there.
And we went right up.
So how do we, how do, if we clean up two and a half years of tires? So what, what, if you hadn't hauled by a handful out there, and everything is burnt, where does the tires come from?
Not all the tires burnt. There was a whole back corner. There are still tires out there that haven't been stacked.
The land goes down.
Mister Dollar come out here and.
Now, I won't make long for.
We're bringing tires.
No, go ahead, this. Yeah, we're, we're spending too much time on this.
Therefore, there, my thing is, we have in place anyway, if they do not clean this property up in a certain amount of time, are we putting a lien on their property? Are we doing it?
Reasonable time, if they don't clean the property, we communicate.
It's been more than reasonable, this been over years.
This is four, about four years.
Then there's a cleanup.
So my thing, have we, have we did that? Have we did that? Have we given them a fine and put a lien on their property? Because we've run out cleaning up something, we're not supposed to be doing unless there's a lien on his property, and he has to pay that lien. If not, he lose that property, and we clean that property up.
Assess as part of the taxes, that's correct.
So my thing is, we sitting in here business, therefore there for years, where we need to be following the rules of what he said.
And that's a one step further. Johnny has what you call hoarding problems. It is one in our family. My sister had it, my grandmother had it, I've got it to a certain degree. We have a hoarding problem.
Well, that's gonna have to stop.
That is a medical problem, that is a known medical fact. My sister was so bad, she had neat rows of stuff going down her hallway. She had stuff on her bed, she had a bathroom.
That's in her house, we got nothing to do with one of them.
That, no, that is a hoarding problem. And it is hereditary, we looked it up, it is hereditary, and it can be caused on by stress. When his daddy died, he went through a lot of stress, and he went the other way. I admit, his place needs cleaning up, yes, he needs to get his idea up there and work on it even more than what he's worked on. Yes, he needs to quit bringing his stuff down to my place, but my place shouldn't have never been put on the list. And y'all should've come out there and seen that, I did not, you look at that letter, it says, "I've got an eighteen-wheeler trailer."
And, and, and once again, all it did was brought attention to the fact that he was moving stuff to your place, and we're gonna have two of them out there now, now we're not gonna have that problem.
Now, let me, let me ask you this, that means I can go down the road, see a house, and come back up here and file on it, and y'all got to go put it right?
If it's out of ordinance, there's ordinances for the county, your property has to be maintained in a certain way. This is not being maintained.
Well, I can use your whole list of, yeah. I've got some, I've got some right now.
You can bring them to us, uh, but, but.
And some of it's right across the house.
Then we send somebody out, supervisor goes out there and looks, and if we deem it necessary. If we deem it necessary, we will do a hearing, and we will put signs up, and you'll have to clean, they'll have to clean it up. That's the way it works.
You got the pictures of my property, my property.
Your property looks fine, but ha, and they didn't put that sign out there, I'm not sure it would look like that right now. That's what we're getting, because he didn't continue to move his stuff.
Actually, in his defense, when the man came out there and put the sign in my yard, me and him done got into it, and he was starting to clean it up, because I told him I wanted the stuff from my property.
If the sign hadn't been put there, would you have done that?
He was already doing it.
Well.
This is the best, this is the worst property we've seen, and it's not just your.
We didn't make, we put a lien on this property.
And we did go out there and get it, and it was clean.
I say give it six more months, then if he ain't got it, six more.
We're not doing that, we're not giving it six months.
This has gone on for two and a half years.
This lady's house is declining because of, your house is gonna continue to decline because of it. He needs to do what he's gonna do, he needs to get on disability, get on disability. That's not gonna free him up from the fact that the property looks like.
The county has done.
The Adams family, I mean, it needs to be taken care of.
The county's done more than, should've been done. That dozer that was taken out there, the day it was taken out there, was the first time that dozer hit the ground. How much did that dozer cost? And we're trying to keep a fire under control?
He didn't cause the fire, he was asleep in his house when the fire took place.
I apologize.
He hurt somebody.
It was because of the tires.
He hurt somebody to clean them with the shore.
Scott, I'm making a motion that if this is not cleaned up, or get some of this stuff cleaned up in two weeks, that we put a lien on their property, that's my motion. If they decide, like, anything that we have to come out and clean up, because that's our own.
The motion to adjudicate the property in minutes, and a reasonable time to clean up is two weeks. After that, the county will do it themselves.
And we'll charge it back to the property. Motion by Miss Hutchins, second about Mister Milton, any more discussion? Uh, all in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
Seventeen, seventeen, seventeen.
You got some, you got about two weeks to get some real progress done out there. You need to find some friends, I don't care what you do.
Need a motion for that?
Mister Gaines.
Hold on one second.
Hold on one second. Quiet, please.
Motion to adjudicate seventeen is not a menace property, just not in state of disrepair, big league.
So, uh, second by Mister Milton, all in favor?
But there's, she's out now, I don't know if she come before here or what, but people are living on property that the deed says only one dwelling per property. They got two dwellings on their property, and it's only supposed to be one dwelling, it's in everybody's deed.
If, if it's in the covenants, and they've been enforced over the years, we, we, we could do it. So if everybody's doing it, and, and all martyrs didn't complain for the last forty years, it's not a big problem.
Because everybody has tried to get along. People are trying to get along in my neighborhood, so we're not doing that. I've never done it because I like the people. But that, I mean, if she's attacking me.
We have to have a separate public hearing about that. Is that the last one, on the public hearing?
Y'all can see an attorney, you may get an attorney.
It'd be better to spend the money cleaning the property up.
No, I'm talking about, if she can go do wrong, Johnny's done wrong, I ain't done wrong.
No, you, you're correct.
Y'all attacked me, and I haven't done nothing wrong. I've missed a day's work, I have been upset, I have been.
He has been satisfied, we have been pulling your name off the, off the.
But I shouldn't have never been here.
Yeah, if, if we hadn't done that, all that stuff on his property, or somewhere, or maybe on your property, then we'd have two Adamses adjudicated. Right now, we have one, and that's the way it's gonna stay.
Somebody put a cane to me, talk to me, don't embarrass me by putting a sign in my yard.
That's the way we do it, I'm sorry, man, that's just the way it is. That's the way, that's the way we try to get the county.
My yard does not recommend having a sign in it, and you know it, Bobby.
Wait, wait, come on. Don't throw any threats in here, come on. They won't go very far.
I'm so sorry. There's six digits to come through the neighborhood.
You haven't got the pictures? Well, I think we're gonna put them in record, but that's all right. We don't need, we don't need. You're, you're off the hook. Any, any more properties? All right, you're, you're a skin.
Where can I get a, uh?
Uh, Scott, what I want for a sec?
Can I keep the automobile, or?
Lord, what can he keep, and what can he not keep? Or can he put a whole complete fence across a whole property with nothing on it?
All the tires have to go. They didn't even jump out on the road or pass the fence that he erected the first time. You cannot work on property, off property.
Mister Gaines, help him haul some more off.
And, and, and if there are abandoned cars, abandoned cars are not supposed to be on property. But if he's got a solid fence across the pond, you cannot see.
Just sit one more.
I need a motion to.
Could y'all answer this?
Motion to get out, both here, both.
Could y'all answer this lady?
If he put a fence all the way across his property, there was nobody to see him.
But it's tires have to go. As the mayor stated, they felt the water, mosquitoes breed, they need to go.
Look, I'll leave him out if he gets rid of the cars and put some, and put.
And then you don't work past the fence?
We went there two years ago.
The road belongs to the county. You can't work in the road, you can't have cars stacked in the middle of the road, or on the side of the road, and they got to be gone. They will be tagged, from now on, they'll be tagged by the sheriff, and it'll happen, I, I don't know, a week. Either move them or re-move them.
Three days, man.
Three days. They get a orange tag on them, three days, they're, they're going to the junkyard.
Yes, sir.
But listen, y'all need to understand this, they told y'all what's gonna happen. From this point, it's gonna be on my table, and when it come to my table, I promise you I'm gonna deal with it. Are we clear on that? Are we clear with that? I know that's any question about that.
Now, this is the law.
I was, I was being a part of this law.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I need a. I need a motion to click, close?
So.
Okay, move by Mister Gaines, second, by Mister Second. All in favor? We're back in regular session. Okay. We ready to go to close determination? No, I ready, I want, I don't want any.
Now, they're gonna crush your pace out.
Need a motion to go to close determination, second by Mister Gaines, second by Mister Second. All in favor? Close determination.
All right, I hope you all are having a great day, I know it's been an interesting one, for sure. First thing I wanna do is get a trash report. District one, ten bags, district two, seventy bags, district three, a hundred and seventeen bags, district four, forty-four bags, district five, a hundred and fourteen bags, for a total of, you know, add another a hundred and eighty-nine bags, somewhere around this area, so I'm not sure if they're still picking up the other side or not. But anyway, five hundred and forty-four bags of trash. President Wilson, you did bring up earlier, a new hire, that was for me, that's Belinda Thompson, part-time cook, eighteen dollars an hour, and it has been signed off of by HR.
Belinda Thompson?
Yes.
Uh, need a motion. Second by Mister Gaines, second by Mister Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Administrator Khan, I know you were working on some insurance things, boys, I do have two roofing quotes for you here. Now, I'm gonna just put them in your hand, because they gave. I'm gonna just put them in your hand, because they gave them, so I don't know if they emailed them or not, but that's two roofing quotes, and that's for the, that's for the range out there. Is, that's for the range, and that's the two quotes that we were able to get, two estimates, two estimates. Just wanna remind everybody that there's a homecoming parade coming up, it's gonna be a lot of stuff going on this week, homecoming parade will be at six o'clock. It'll leave from the bluff and go all the way up to MLK, and that's where it ends, ends at MLK. And if I'm not sure, I believe the lineup starts at five, but I would expect it to be pretty massive, so I would tell you, plan on just paying to be in.
You won't be here, man.
You, you won't be here? Okay, well, I, I'll be here. Yes, Thursday, yes. Thursday, yeah, Thursday. The homecoming parade is at six P M., yes, lineup's at five, homecoming parade, I would say lineup's at four though, because I've seen a lot of, a lot of floats down here on the on, that's being made up, so. And you know, they, they're having Tent City this year again, so it's gonna be a lot of stuff, I hope everybody really come for the right reason, and I believe they will, because last, last time, they came for the right reasons. Where you had a few little things, but nothing that I would consider out of order near, you know, people generally wanna have a good time, and we, we welcome them here in this community. And we just hope they just be safe while they're here, you know, safe and enjoy themselves, that's all we ask of them. Um, I do wanna tell you all that we had a meeting with the Public Safety Commissioner last time, and I don't know if I brought this up. But Public Safety Commissioner Sean Timmer is doing his eighty-two counties in eighty-two days. And we had a really, really good meeting with the Public Safety Commissioner. And I say publicly that he was the first Public Safety Commissioner that I've ever seen come around the counties and actually talk to local law enforcement. We had several, we had local law enforcement from city, county, uh, schools, everybody there. And he laid out a lot of this stuff that he's gonna be fighting for, how them to hold this board, actually supports him when he gets ready to announce those things, but. One of those things that I'm gonna bring up today is he's looking hard and heavy at supplementing pay for law enforcement, and he's got a mechanism that he, he's gonna ask the legislature to do it, to do it. And he's got it figured out, and I just hope and pray that, one, our local and state officials get behind him, and two, it is passed. Because if he gets what he's planning on announcing, implementing, I think it's a game changer for the state. And even while I'm saying it, I want to say to the board that I appreciate you all working diligently to get raises for everybody. You know, that's always an instant shot of adrenaline in the arms, when you get raises to your people who've been working hard over, you know, ever since they've been here, so. I know I said it again, but I'm gonna say it again, I appreciate, I appreciate that for sure. Also wanted you to know, we just had two people graduate from, two people graduated from the Harris County Law Enforcement Officer Training Academy. That was Deputy John Nix and Deputy Garian King. Very excited about this because in this day and age, it's hard to find good people who, who really wanna be in law enforcement, notice I said good people. I didn't say people, I said good people wanna be in law enforcement, and I appreciate the board's continued support on making sure we, give we lead for our staff to go. Now, we just sent two out to the academy this Sunday too, and that was Deputy Sean Davis and Deputy Sam Lewis. They just went off to the academy, so they'll be completing their twelve weeks, and we'll be supporting them with their graduation as well. The good thing about all these people that I just named, though, they are homegrown. The most, most of them, I would say, three, three out of four are from Adams County, four out of four is from the Mizzou. And that means a lot, when you got people who want to serve, want to be here, want to stay here, you know, when it comes to retention. And, and especially when you're educating and put so much training into them, you know, you're trying to keep, you're not trying to train them up so they can leave you, so I, I appreciate those guys. And ladies deciding they want to earn the badge. The other thing I was gonna bring up, this, I keep hearing y'all talking about all that wonderful opioid money, look at y'all, y'all think I'm finna ask you for some, you're right. I was just gonna tell y'all, y'all got some more opioid money left, just consider putting a, a metal detector at their front door at the courthouse so we can open the back door. You know, if you got something left that's great, you don't understand, I just wanna throw that in there, because I know everybody's jumping at the beach to get their, their portion of that opener or opioid money. Us as law enforcement, I guess we just need max, so, anyway, just put that out there though, just take that into consideration. Last thing I wanna tell you all is that, we have a very good jail meeting, I think I thought, Miss Khan, Scott, a personal over there, and some of them, in my court. In reference to the jail, and they'll be presenting, I think, if, if I'm not mistaken, at the next meeting, they're supposed to have some numbers for you all realistically. And I just want you all to be thinking about this, actually thinking about that, because I know, I know we want to do what's right, it's just a matter of finding the fun to do, which is very important, and it's a lot of ideas that hopped around. Based off what they gave us on their last call that we won, and they will be presenting that to the next board. But as that next board meets approached, just keep this in mind, think about how much it costs to be a hobby lot, that's all I had to say, thank you all.
Yeah, uh, question, uh, on the cameras, I know you were supposed to get back with them with like four on camera in place, uh, did you ever get back with them, figure out what it was? You know, we was talking about the Brahmore park.
I will, I will get back with you today on Brahmore, but I know they came down Tuesday, and they did some more installments now. I haven't talked to the guy who is assigned to that, but I'll let you know after this meeting, because he, he is staying pretty abreast of that, and I know. And it, it's some, matter of fact Supervisor Gray's son that just got put in your area over there, and I know you'll be happy about that. I ain't, I ain't saying give you your home or nothing like that, I'm just saying your district. And I know I'm extremely happy about that, because I know that's gonna do for that particular area.
And I, you know, and I just want you to keep in mind, having Brahmore going down, I think the board will check, we had not had a lot of problems at the, uh, Adams County, question center at the arena. Uh, I haven't been there lately, it's been going good, but a possibility of a big event going on, I did go to the Wild Wild West show that you had over there. There's a bunch of people, so it's gonna be a good idea to possibly have one, you know, that's just prevention, you haven't had. I know, but that's something to put on your mind when you have, if you have a hazard area, because you know it's good to cover our parks and stuff like that, and that's one area. Hadn't been a lot, uh, I guess things haven't been as big as they've been lately, but you know, people are looking at it right now, so I just held it up.
Yeah, and it, and it is a lot of stuff going on, you know, the shooting that just happened over there in Alabama, like, where two people got, two apparently, and one decided he gonna fire the other in the crowd, shot fourteen people. Killed two of them, put them to child, so, you know, you don't know you need until you need. And, um, and so I definitely keep that in mind, talk to them today, and I will need your update on Brahmore thing, because that has been on, on the front of my mind as well.
Yeah.
A lot of them, big time, we got others out there, but that particular one.
Yeah.
Is, is definitely not a bad burn, especially since that crew is coming down here now, almost every week. Putting them in and installing things like that, I have been keeping them with, I find. Anybody else got anything for me? I know you have the rest of it. I know you have the rest of your. Thank you all.
Okay, Mr. Gray.
Yes, sir, uh. Some lady, uh, she live, and she live in Brahmore area, and she don't live in my district, she live in District Five. And she send me a text, uh, texting to you.
Okay.
Uh, she claiming she can't go to her mailbox, she can't take her dog out because aggressive dogs out in Brahmore. And, uh, I told her I was gonna forward this information to you, because I know how she feel, my, they got an aggressive dog over there where my momma live, and I had to go knock on people's door. And, uh, officers bound a long rope tied to something where the dog gonna get loose. Because I can imagine if my momma go to the mailbox at eighty-seven, she trying to rough up her dog, and what happened, that ain't gonna be good for nobody. Uh, so I'm gonna send this text to you, and maybe you can tell basically her, because where the dog's coming from, they got an aggressive individual out there, as well as dogs. If you know what I mean.
Okay.
I'm gonna send it to you. Uh, the next thing is the N W A C P. Uh, Freedom Fund banquet was a great banquet to me. And former Supervisor Dabronell, former Mayor Dagronell was the guest speaker, and everybody know he can speak. And it was a great event, anybody wanna look at it, but in the process of, of going to that. Uh, the N W A C P had came to this board and asked this board, uh, for us to use part of our.
American Rescue Fund.
Rescue fund to help individuals with housing, and, uh, not only did we help, we exceeded the amount that they asked for, they asked for fifty thousand, we did a hundred, they came back, did another hundred thousand. And, uh, I was getting ready to go, and they kept saying, well, you need to stay here, you need to stay here, I'm like, I'm ready to go. So I end up staying, and the N W A C P gave this board. And a nice proclamation for us doing what we did to help the, uh, individuals in housing in this community, and I thought that was a great thing.
It felt good, didn't it?
It felt good, we got that too, it felt real good.
We're helping a lot of people.
Uh, but here, here goes something I wish Ms. Lynette was able to hear this, and I, I haven't confirmed this, but I heard that the city was not in the SNAP business anymore. And my thing is, if the city is not using the banks that they was using, maybe Lynette could bring those banks over, uh, onboard, and we can get more people, uh, some help from their SNAP. They still out there, they still need some help for, uh, getting their roof done and all that kinda stuff. Uh, I did get a letter of resignation from my appointee on the Port Commission. She got Airport Board, but it's supposed to be Port Commission. And, uh, that mean I'm gonna be looking for somebody to replace him on the Port Commission. Say stepping down for personal reasons, so I'm not gonna question what his reasons is. Uh, I wanna say about Morgantown water situation, I keep, I've been keeping in contact with some of the people that live out there. And some of them say their water bill been fluctuating up and down, but it's kinda like at that ninety-dollar, uh, deal. Uh, Scott, I think, uh, the commissioner told, where he mentioned to me, if we wanted him to come over and explain things to those residents, that he would, so we should reach out to him and. Set a date where he can come over, and we can let the citizens out there in the Morgantown area, uh, know what's going on.
With the Public Service Commission?
Yes, sir. And, uh, just gonna say this about that, that project out in Morgantown. Uh, I got an opportunity right out there, uh, it's just like I tell them in the neighborhood watching me. Uh, the road gonna end up being beautiful, but I promise you, they gonna be speeding up and down Morgantown Road, because they was speeding when the road was messed up, and now you got a good portion. Boy, I went through that the other day, I, I guess I wasn't going fast enough, somebody come by me so fast, I'm like, I don't know what's gonna happen with that. Rock, Mr. Grover, I met him at McDonald's, he told me to come on, follow him, and I, he ended up following him out to where he live. And, uh, when you get a chance, I wanna show you exactly what he said. Uh, they do have a speed limit out there, but it's a, it's, it's kinda, those trees are coming out so far. In that curve, and out of that curve, you can't see nothing. And, and those eighteen-wheelers don't be going thirty miles an hour, they be all over in both lanes until you see you coming, and they try to get over. But I'm just gonna let you look at it, and, and I think it must have Smith property, and if there's any kinda way that he agreed to, I ain't saying cut it down, but. Cut it a little bit where it won't be a dead spot, because it's definitely a dead spot.
I agree, I know exactly what you're talking about.
I, when I go through that, and you come down that hill and come around that curve, I be trying to slow down, but that momentum, momentum keep you going so fast. And if an eighteen-wheeler coming the other way, they halfway the road, is, is a dangerous situation. Uh, and the next thing I wanna say is. Uh, it, it is a lot of bad stuff going on in this world, and it's, uh, I'm just gonna say this. To me, right and wrong is not determined by the color of your skin. Right and wrong is not determined by your political party. Right and wrong is not determined by what you have and who you know. Right and wrong should be determined by what's right and what's wrong. I just wanna remind the clear-thinking citizens of Adams County that they need to be paying close attention to what's going on in our county. And make sure that we are following the rules. Dad always told me, be careful who you follow, and make sure you know where they're going. I know it's real tight right now, and I know the money is tight, but we gotta be smart enough to know our money ain't good money. So be careful with who you follow. Uh, last, you know, when a person show you who, who they are, you need to believe. My sympathy goes out to the Mason, the Shaw, the Oliver, the Walker, the Arnold, the Haller. And the Rutherford and Hollins. It was amazing, Mr. George Rutherford died on the same day that Mr. Arnold died, and both of them used to be police officers, I mean, they died on the same day. And last, that's it.
Thanks, Mr. Gray, can you, uh, make a motion to pray, uh, Mr. Roger Allen?
I made a motion that we pray Mr. Allen resignation letter across the limits.
Second, second by Mr. Gaines, all in favor? Any names?
Ready for me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to say, um, I had a neighborhood watch meeting on last Thursday, Thursday, last week, and it turned out really good. I had a lot of, um, residents calling me about, um, erosion problems and E W P projects, which they did not understand. So I had, uh, Mr. Oliver to come out and speak with them in regards to the E W P projects and how they work, and how they should go about doing it, uh. And what the qualifications are, you know, for them to submit an E W P project. So that went well, we had a good turnout, everything went well, and I, I just thank the residents for coming out and talking with them, uh, come about it. Another thing is, uh, Scott, I wanna check and see if you made contact with Mr. uh, insurance agent, Mr. Burns, in regards to what I spoke to you about last week. And you spoke to, uh, Massit about when I went up there to a meeting.
I'll, I'll do that immediately, I'm sorry about that, and I'll, I wanna make sure that I understand it right, so I'm gonna be a call later, real late this afternoon.
Okay, that's fine. Another thing is, uh, the Oktoberfest, um, we'll be having an Oktoberfest on October the twenty-fifth, and it'll be starting at one P M. And I'm asking everybody to come out who wants to come out and have a good time, and we'll be giving out free food, and there'll be great entertainment and, uh, fun for the kids. And that's all I have.
Mr. Gaines.
Uh, I guess I'll start with the dog problem that Supervisor Gray talked about, uh, I also got it, it's nothing new, it's, they recorded. Um, and I said I was gonna give it Miss Karen a day about it, uh, so she's aware of it. Is that the same dog that I did the last time I did the one out there? I don't know if he bit the deer, it might be each more, uh, but I will find out for this video. It's been, uh, it, it, it's, it's a. It's been very uh, it is, it's, it's a, this is not the first or second time a bench right here and so, you know. But I'm sure y'all have made contact several times on the scene and I I have, I'm pretty much sure I got the same visit. That I was going forward to is Karen today. Okay, and uh, we'll do that. Uh, and I will say, you know, they uh, our uh, arena is getting a lot of exposure. Uh, they had producers coming in and everybody talked about how nice uh, their arena was. I thought about it and I tried to uh, and I brought something for the school when we was doing uh, redoing our parks. Because you know, everybody came out and said, oh, this, this is a nice arena. This Supervisor Gaines. Uh, he was the one. I said, no, we had projects. And it was just board who did everything. We did everything together because I can make like Wes might deal with problems, Dan might deal with this, Danny and Mike might deal with the grain. But it take us as one to make things happen. So I don't like to take all the credit. But I would uh, tell y'all to think about something else. Uh, we kinda slipped through the cracks. If y'all remember, I asked that we probably can get a plaque or something when we upgraded that with our names on it as supervisor to say it's been upgraded by this board because we did make leaps and bounds. And I I wouldn't, and they kept saying, Mr. Gaines, it's a crisis now. Mr. Gaines might know more about the rodeo arena than this, but it's Adams County Board of Supervisors. And I think, I don't know how y'all feel about it. We got a ball field. We got different things. We upgraded. But that's, you know, that's just something so we can have a sound what's upgraded. Uh, and then uh, E W P projects, in fact, me and Robert talked about this. There's a lot of misinformation uh, coming out about E W P projects because I was called about two weeks ago about E W P and uh, I've had several and this property was a hundred and fifty yards off the road at the end of somebody's property. And they, they're being told that they have to go through the county. And I've had several, I talked to Robert about that. Has nothing to do with that, but there's a lot of misinformation going on about that. And uh, so I don't know how we can do it, uh, clarify that, but it's, it's just something that everybody will pass, but some things that we respond for, some things that we can, but then there's some things that we can't. And uh, so we had a homecoming coming up and we do have a balloon race coming up, I think the next week if I'm correct. Uh, so you know, we have a lot of traffic in and out of matches and ask everybody to stay safe and uh, you know, just be mindful of where we is and hope everybody can come and we can have a uh, a really good couple of weekends in Adams County that people can come and enjoy. And uh, my Airport Appointee, I had a couple just later terminated, but I wanna make a motion to uh, appoint Dr. Henry Mercer for my Airport Appointee.
Second. Motion by Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
Any names? Motion carried.
Can you send his contact information?
Move forward. Is that all?
Yes, ma'am.
No. Okay. The thing?
Um, I only have one thing. Lynette could not be here today and so she asked me to get permission from y'all to pay this invoice to Allied Tree Company for Kevin's applicant in the room project in an amount of two thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion. Uh, move on. Inte- on uh, not just in the circle, it's uh, one, one of it, drive. Second. Second motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
Motion carried. All right, Mr. Gray.
Um, I have a couple of things. Um, we need to have the September bill report for the Adams County Sheriff's Office for the next minutes, please.
So. Move by Mr. Gaines. Second by Ms. Hudson. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
I also need to have the um, September tax redemption set on this for the next minutes, please.
So. Move by Mr. Gaines. Second by Ms. Hudson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Any names? Motion carried.
Um, we also received from the US Department of Agriculture the closeout on E W P C one oh five, which is Magnolia Bluff and Mountain Heights. And just need to have that for the next minutes.
Heard the request?
Someone.
Move by Ms. Hudson. Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
Um, I have two travel requests. One is for Paige Dean to travel to Homestead and industrial seminar in Clinton, Mississippi on November fourth and fifth.
So. You wanna put them together?
Um, yeah, we can. And then I have travel for Claudia White to travel to the receiving clerk certification seminar, November fifth in Jackson.
So. Move by Ms. Hudson. Second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
Any names? Motion carried.
Thank you. I have uh, one other item. Um, our copier unfortunately has uh, aged out. It's twelve years old. And so um, A one copy is the company that we go through for our coffee service. And they uh, presented a proposal. I just told the bond today. I represent today the board. Uh, when we originally did the lease on the, the, this machine, it's two hundred eighty-two dollars and it's actually going down to two hundred fifteen dollars. So, and it is within his budget, um, and just need permission for the president to sign off on this agreement so we can get a new copier.
So. Move by Mr. Gaines. Second. Second by Ms. Hilton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any names? Motion carried.
That's all. Thank you.
I just have one thing. There was a letter of support that Southwest Mississippi EPA is asking for. They're trying to get a grant um, for the federal government. And it's no, cost us nothing. We just have to make a saying that Southwest EPA is a good company and we hope that they get the grant. It's for vegetation control and plant control.
So. Move by Mr. Gaines. Second by Ms. Hudson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
Any names? Motion carried.
Do it for me?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, with that one change we made at the last uh, at the last meeting with the enforcement insurance, we had uh, over five, I need to agree that I signed. Um, and I just need to spread that across the minutes.
Okay, you heard the request? Move uh, Mr. Gaines. Second by Ms. Hudson. Any discussion? All in favors?
Yeah.
Any names? Motion carried.
Uh, I just want to spread across the minutes that I signed a delivery document for the remaining three dock trucks that we received from truck works.
Heard the request?
You don't have to do that.
Okay.
We don't have to do that?
We already. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we're on the hook for it. That's all I'm gonna let you.
No, we already.
Uh, and then I was communicating earlier, um, I signed pre-application forms to uh, meet the October third deadline for FAA funding. Um, and like I said, it was for uh, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars for repair and rehabilitation of the hangers. And then another hundred and sixty thousand to um, correct the improved, or to correct the safety area on runway thirty thirty-two, I mean on runway thirty-two. So it's just an application. We're not guaranteed to get money, but at least we're in the hat with everybody else, so.
Machine approved for the sign that, I was kind of.
Yeah.
Yes, spread it across the minutes.
You and I have proven for a sign.
You need to do it.
I, I signed it. I have signed it right. I just want to spread across the minutes.
Spread across the minutes. I need to.
You got to below.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Milton. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
Any names? Motion carried.
Um, actually while we were in our meeting, I got a text from uh, Carl Beasley. He has turned in his resignation and he want to discuss his um, start date, so I'll get with him this afternoon.
Who is that?
Carl Beasley, the airport director. The only thing that may give the hiccup is that he is an essential employee, so I'm not sure how that works with the government shutdown. Um, but like I said, that's what he wanted to talk about today, so.
Hopefully that'll be resolved soon.
Yeah. Uh, I wanted to ask the board scouts, um, closing or covering the pool for the winter. Uh, season's, season's down. We can put the cover on it, um, get it winterized. Um, I suppose shut the pool in till next spring.
Um, so we don't have any costs associated after that?
That will.
Really eliminate most of them?
It, yes. It'll turn full time into seasonal.
Okay. Then a request?
I just was asking if y'all were, well, yes, it's a request I guess, yeah.
So what do you want, you want?
What do you want to do?
We want to close, I want to shut, uh, we have covers for the pool, so it's, the season's over. I would like to have it um, cleaned up, winterized, covered, and basically we would shut the door of the pool till next spring.
So, I mean, that sounds good, but don't you think we need to come, what do they need to uh, have? I don't need to keep it up. What do they?
Yeah, somebody has to go by every couple of days, but that's, just make sure the, I think the pump still has to
Yeah, that's actually, you know, for, I don't know. I just, I just think before we just shut it out now, we need to get that the water pool over there.
He's, I think she's already talked to her.
I've talked to Blankensands and they've kinda given me an idea of what we need to do, so.
So Blankensands taking care of the pool now?
No, no. I called and asked.
So who taking care of the pool?
Mr. Ralph.
Mr. Ralph? Yes, have we talked to Mr. Ralph yet?
I wanted to get your blessing before I talk to him.
Well, I want to listen.
Blessing. I mean, yeah, don't you talk to him first?
Okay.
Before we can, you know.
And make the decision without them, because they run that day to day operation.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to bring it up, because yes, to your point, it would save um, salaries. It would save on electricity, water.
Is anybody open? I mean, throughout the year?
We do have one full-time employee, but with the pool closed, we won't need a full-time employee. We just need seasonal.
Is this the daddy pool?
Uh, and the city has the.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, and, and I'm just gonna talk to the mayor.
Yes, so that's. Yeah, we can see on there. You can talk that out.
Let me ask a question. In the process of putting your cover over it, for how many months?
So if we covered it in mid-October, we would probably uncover it at the end of March first.
So what you think that water gonna look like then?
Yeah.
Well, that's the kicker. We've gotta get it winterized. It has to be chlorineed and everything. That's why, to your point, I need to talk to Mr. Ralph. And I have talked to Blankensands about the process. So, and if people cover their pools all the time.
Yeah, water temperature drops, so algae doesn't grow.
Yeah.
Because the water temperature's gonna be below sixty degrees probably.
I'm just asking, man, because I came in the area where we didn't have, because we, we had to drain houses out and do all that.
I mean, same high year round. It's four, it's about four hundred dollars a month, same thing.
I'm still asking the question. Once we cover that pool and, and, and ain't nothing going on at that pool and it's covered, who got a pool that's covered and leave the cover the whole time?
I have two of them. They do it.
But them smarter pools are right.
Yeah. If it's Blankensand or something like that does it all the time and uh, and Ralph could do what they, they ask, shouldn't get a problem. All right.
I'll be my homework.
Okay.
Um, and one, I, I have one invoice for Bellwood for a hundred and eight thousand dollars. I did get an email from um, Mr. Wimberley. I can think of his name for a minute. And he said that, let's see, let me pull it up and I'll read it. He said, the major dirt work is complete. All that is left is the placement of granular material on top of the levee for the road. Final grassing and repair of the road, making the culverts. And he's estimating the final cost should be three million eight, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And if I remember correctly, that was right around the, the budget that we had.
Okay, is, is he done the work or do we have something we're holding back from?
Yeah, there is a retainage that has been helped back.
They're not finished. Like I said, they got a gravel top up with the gravel on the top.
So how many?
Come ask us to do all that, but they're gonna do it, is what you're saying. They gonna gravel it.
They, they said that um, all that was left was place uh, the granular material on top of the levee.
Finish grassing, see.
But they want to pass, pay all that before they do that?
No, they have a retainage of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars that is calculated on every invoice. This is just a progress of another invoice for a hundred and eight.
Okay. You heard the request?
So.
Move by Mr. Milton.
Sir.
Second by Ms. Hudson. Any discussion? You got anything, Robbie, again?
No, I'm like Ricky though, but I said next one, he ought to come in here and talk to us a little bit about.
I'm gonna tell him because they're nearing the end. He needs to come.
Yeah. But I'm just saying, I'm, you know, before you get this final payment, he needs to come here and talk to us and know.
Yeah.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
And there is this.
That's it.
Yeah.
So what are you there for?
Pay request number what?
Bellwood.
That would be.
So we, we, we still, is Nick still not coming in here?
He's not coming in here. We're, we're telling him.
When's the reason why?
Okay, all in favor?
But I will email him back, Supervisor Tom Gray, and tell him that, there it is. It was twelfth, yeah, number twelve, that he needs to come at the next board meeting and give us update and see um, the final, I don't even think not the final, depending on the weather, but at least come in and give us an update of what's left to be done, because it's nearing the end.
Okay. He's supposed to come in for every pay request. Tell him, he's supposed to come in for every pay request and explain how the project's doing in case the board has questions. It doesn't have to be him. It should be anyone from the department. He has control of that.
Okay, all in favor? All right, any names? Motion carried. That's all? Okay. I got a letter from senior systems. Uh, sooner they uh, wanna know, they have a new director, Karl Monroe. They want to put on their uh, theater production at the safe range, but it doesn't give me a date. Um, I don't think we'll have a problem with it if that doesn't interfere with anything else around. I'll give this to Corvette.
Yeah.
Do we need a?
Needs to go to Corvette.
Yeah.
Corvette, none of them.
Corvette, yeah.
Okay. All right. All right, Farica Washington. This is uh, travel voucher from Farica Washington. It's, it's pretty extensive. I don't know. Looks like she's going to Ferry every day. This one's five hundred and seventy-three dollars for.
It's at our nurse, it's at our, not our nurse's, our sister's, nurse's.
Yeah. Um, and then another three hundred and eighty-four dollars.
For how long?
When did that one start up?
Seven one to nine thirty.
All right, this is seven one and it goes to nine thirty.
So has, have we?
You said seven one, nine thirty two?
Uh, this is seven one to nine thirty. I, I don't know if there are two of them. Is this you did it on?
In travel for work. It's part of our handbook. Made an application for drive.
But it looks like it all, she got.
She goes to.
Almost looks like that would hit it, no?
This is where it's on the urns.
See, where does that?
The way.
She goes to urns and she goes to Ferry.
Harns.
Harns.
Oh, the Harns.
I mean, but I think from that, you probably, we have a mail service. The person that does mail, I would be good on urns to deliver it, but that's not saying it's not a, which is saying we might be in creative, you know, because you're paying her hours.
Okay, well, you're looking at that. Mitzi, do we have any money in recreation? Uh, you know, the playground equipment was destroyed at uh, Kingston. And, and I'd like to put some of it back and I'd like to get uh, Ms. Dean to uh, find the need, find some.
Okay.
What, what we can put out there and how much it's gonna be and
Okay.
Um, we, we, we don't have any insurance on playgrounds with it, which it would probably be outraged anyway that, that stuff was old and starved.
Yeah.
A tree fell on and broke, broke it all up, so I think Robbie, you cleared the site almost completely. I think, Robbie, you cleared the site almost completely, haven't you?
They should be working on, you know, getting it off of there.
Oh. I'd like to find something to put, put back there. Uh, I would, we still don't know. I, I remember picking all that stuff out. I'm glad I didn't have it there, though. Now, now, because it'd be destroyed, but that is the one part that didn't get any playgrounds with it and I don't know what happened. I picked it out. I remember doing it. But that, that's four or five years ago, wasn't it?
Yep. I leave now, not for long.
So I'll make a motion to approve a travel. Yeah, true, that's reimbursement.
Yeah, that's reimbursement.
Um, is there another way we should be doing this? Scott, is that what you said? That we maybe whoever this mail person is, they're using the county vehicle or what?
Yeah, I think there's probably some of its job is to deliver stuff. Has the county vehicle might be better for the pharmacy part of it as far as her traveling to Faraday to, to do the medical work. I don't see a way around that other than her not showing it.
Okay. All right, uh, I, I announced last time we were here that, uh, we were gonna have a poll watchers class, uh, a poll watchers class, and we did it yesterday and this whole place was full. Uh, uh, people interested in, in being poll watchers. Uh, there was, every chair was full. We had to bring some more out. This lady was here for about two and a half hours and she really made it, uh, kind of interesting. I realize how ignorant I was as far as it comes to poll watchers and what they're supposed to do and the poll workers, what they're supposed to do. There's a lot more going on in those elections than you, you could ever imagine. But, uh, anyways, big success. Um, a lot of people really interested. There was a young lady sitting here all day and she never said a word. Everybody might have noticed her sitting there. She's very quiet. She was here yesterday and she wanted to attend the board meeting because she want to know how the county government worked. And now, now they're gonna do poll workers classes. Uh, I guess it, upstairs at the courthouse, uh, pretty soon and, and a lot of those people want to do that. Because they said our, our poll workers were aging, plus the county employees can't do it anymore. You know, they were getting paid to work and do the pain. And some, somebody, I think his name, but Mr. Slower called all of that and said that you cannot do that. So anyway, those workers aren't there anymore. So I just wanted to let, let y'all know that, you know, if you have somebody in your districts that might be interested in, in poll workers, this time they don't really need very many, uh, all over the county because we're, we're only half the counties voting. Uh, um, but, uh, you know, when the other elections are coming up, the, the, like, some of those poll workers are over eighty years old and they just, uh, it's really hard for them to do that now. And we need younger blood, let's say, to get in there and, and go through these courses and know what's going on. Yes, sir.
I'm glad you brought that up because I met a group when I went to the last shares association and they're gonna pay to come down themselves, pay for all the training and everything to train local law enforcement on the laws when it comes to elections, what they can and cannot do when they go on these polls. So it's good the poll watchers are doing it on one side and we're getting law enforcement trained up so they'll be aware of what they can and can't do when they go into these polls and, you know, because of political climate, uh, what they can and cannot do when they go into these polls as well on the other side.
There, yeah, there's a lot of rules there that people don't realize. You can't be with them three foot of those machines, you know, and, 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 and you, you can't hire voter to vote even that, that affidavit, uh, because they're not on the roll or whatever, but, but I, I, I learned how much election commissioners do. Y'all don't, y'all realize they're, they're purging those polls all the time with guests and people are moving and it's, there's a lot of stuff going on there. It's very interesting, but, uh, anyway, that concludes my report. Does anybody have anything else? Uh, any public comments, any kind?
I want you to reset. We got interviews in twenty minutes.
I've got to excuse.
You got somewhere to go. Okay, I, I need a motion. Reset. Bye, Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Hudson. All in favor?